Good evening, everyone. We'll go and call the City Council meeting for March 7, 2011 to order. First thing on the agenda as always is roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson, Wyffenbach, Davis, Hadcock, Kroger, Costello, Quaker, Wa, Brown, Mason. We have quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or a pager, if you would please put that in silent or turn it off, we would certainly appreciate it. Also, if you do get a phone call during the meeting, we would ask that you just actually go out the door and actually take it in the hallway so you don't disturb the meeting. We certainly appreciate that. Also, if you wish to speak on any issue, either on the agenda or during the public comment period, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left over by the media table. If you'd please fill that out, put your name and also the item number so as we make our way down the agenda, we do not overlook you. Let's see. Next on the agenda as always is the invocation. I would ask everyone to please rise. Pastor Troy Carr from Faith Temple will be giving our invocation, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Amen. Good evening. I'd first of all like to thank the mayor and the city council for the opportunity that you allow clergy to come and open your meetings in prayer. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the mayor and the city council. My prayer tonight is that you would give them wisdom in making decisions for our city. Bless our city, our state, and our country. In Jesus' name, amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, pastor. Certainly appreciate those words. Next thing on the agenda as always is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items to be placed on the agenda? If so, please turn your light. I do have two things. I have a 55A, which is under bids. This is to award a bid on Anamosa Street between Haynes and Midway. That'll be 55A. And also a 56A, under mayor's items. We do have the results of our citizen survey, and I'll be presenting that at tonight's council meeting. Any additional items? Let's go to Alderman. Sam Quaker.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to add an item 56B called "Update on Sign Committee and Possible Motion for Delivery of Item from Committee."
Task force. Very good, Alderman Quaker. We will call that 56B. Thank you, Alderman Quaker. Any additional items? Any additional items? Seeing none. I'm gonna go to the staff. Robert, we picked up everything? Okay. Chair looked for motion to approve the agenda as amended to include a 55A, a 56A, and a 56B. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Chair looked for a motion to approve the minutes for the February 22, 2011 special council meeting and the February 22, 2011 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Words and recognitions, we have none tonight, as we usually take up our veteran of the month, and also our employee recognitions the second meeting of the month. So we will move on. We are on to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have a number of speaker request forms for the public comment period, and I'm gonna take these in the order that they were received. So the first one up is Jim Peterson. Now, we do time this, and so what I would ask is, if you wish to speak, you would come forward, you would state your name for the record, and then the floor would be yours, and we do allow three minutes for each one of these segments. With that, Mr. Peterson.
South Dakota.
Jim, could you pull one of those mics a little bit closer to you? Thank you so much. That's great. Thank you.
Well, right from the get-go, I'd like to respectfully request that you extend my time to six minutes v. three, because I want to address a pretty sophisticated issue that just can't be done in a three-minute timeline.
Is there any objection? Now, Jim, I think all of us up here know that this is probably dealing with the sign issue. Are you basically the spokesman for the sign?
Basically.
Okay. Is there any objection to allowing a six-minute presentation? Okay? If not, there again, Jim, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
All right. Jim Peterson, 1203 Eleventh Street, Rapid City, South Dakota. All right. Let me preface my remarks tonight with a sincere thank you to the hundreds of my fellow citizens who have served our community on all matters of boards, councils, committees, and task forces over the years. They are the reason our government works, because democracy is not a spectator sport. I would also extend that thank you to our city employees for their dedication to improve our quality of life each and every day. That said, though, sometimes our system falls short, particularly when special interests play a disproportionate part in the process. This is why a great majority of your constituents are so upset about the seemingly uncontrollable signage that continues to blight our community and the many unsuccessful attempts to deal with it. A case in point is the ad hoc sign code revision task force appointed to rewrite the city's sign ordinance. At the insistence of some members of this council, five of the 12 members appointed to that group are employees of the very sign companies which the ordinance regulates. I heard one of you express the opinion one time that there are two sides to every issue, and both should be represented, to which I would reply that you would be hard-pressed to find a few dozen of our citizens that want more sign clutter in our city, whereas you could find thousands in the city that want this continuing blight to stop. So that's the ratio that should have been reflected in the staffing of this task force, rather than having half of its members being employees of special interest. Let me contrast this citizen's effort with the effort to rewrite the Pennington County sign ordinance. There was an ad hoc committee, but that was made up entirely of citizens who had, whose only interest was to improve their communities. They had no ties to any sign companies. They spent the better part of a year educating themselves on the issues. They held public meetings to which special interests could come and politely offer their opinions, and then those citizens presented their recommendations to the governing body, in this case, the county commission. The sign companies also came before the commission, made the arguments for their points of view, and the outcome was a much improved ordinance, not grade because of state restrictions, but much improved. Since the regular citizens on this citizen task force have businesses and jobs, while the sign company-affiliated members of that task force have a vested financial interest to be at every meeting, the situation that arose at the February 23 meeting was inevitable. There were four signed people and three others, plus Alderman Costello, who, by the way, has diligently tried to make this process viable. And at that meeting, they voted to adopt the four sign credits per digital face, which is widely opposed in this community. The only thing that stopped the folks who are supposed to be regulated from writing their own regulation was that one of the regular members saw what was transpiring and left, thus breaking the quorum. The same problem has existed with the permanent sign code Board of Appeals, which overwhelmingly, over the years, has ruled in favor of special interest over public, over public good, excuse me, because it has so many appointed sign company-affiliated members. So, why am I so personally upset about the situation? Well, besides the fact that I'm watching my community being trashed by this epidemic of litter on a stick, let me give you a graphic example of how this process has failed. In this city, you need a building permit for just about any little project you might want to do around your home. Yet a few years ago, Epic Outdoor Advertising put up four digital billboards costing perhaps $150,000 each without a permit, without city permission, and certainly without any concern for the public good. When they were called on this by the city code enforcement, the company stated that they could do this because they were public purpose signs, you know, like the one at the Civic Center, which of course is utter nonsense. Just because they display a few public service messages, the real purpose of those billboards is clearly to make Mr. Casey even richer, nothing more. And yet, the then-seated city council gave Epic a variance for these billboards so the company didn't have to adhere to the sign ordinance regarding motion or anything else. They should have made them taken down. Now, fast forward to the morning of July 17, 2009. I was driving through the Gap when I came upon an accident. At first, I didn't see the traffic backed up or the flashing lights on the police car. The first thing I saw was the changing images on the Epic digital billboard. Eight-year-old Hunter Smith was enjoying a fun ride on the back of his dad's motorcycle that morning. They were on their way home, heading eastbound around the blind curve in the Gap, when a van pulled out of the bait shop in front of them. It's a blind curve. Daniel, Hunter's dad, would have had a second or two at the most to react. But I think that he was distracted that morning, just as I was moments later. Daniel and Hunter died that day. And, excuse me, intuitively, I'm sure that the last conscious thing Daniel saw on this earth before their bodies slammed into the van was the Epic digital billboard. And that's why this issue should be so very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. We also have a speaker request form from Pat Roseland. Again, Pat, if you'd just come forward, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Pat Roseland, concerned citizen against billboards. Thank you, council and mayor for letting me speak tonight. The billboard companies, Epic and Lamar, have created this issue, the proliferation of off-premise billboards, and I do not see these companies take the initiative to fix the issue that they created. So we, the citizens of Rapid City, will rise up and fix this issue ourselves, and we will take our city back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Mike Kwasny. And Mike, please identify yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
I'm Mike Kwasny. I'm a citizen of this great city. I come before you. I thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, councilman, fellow citizens. I come before you today as a citizen of this great city. There are now two petitions circulating in our community, designed to give our people a choice, a guideline for future signage in our beautiful community on the edge of the Black Hills of South Dakota, the gateway to Mount Rushmore. We are not asking for any taking. We are not asking for no new signs. On the first citizen initiative, we are quite simply asking for the following limits: no new digital off-premise signs, which at this time, it is unclear what the regulations are; distance apart, 2,000 radial feet, existing distance, as you probably know, is 1,000; and the size to remain at 250 square feet. That's what they're at right now. The second, we ask a liability on our city to be put in check, to put a time limit on use of a credit system that has been used as a bargaining chip. Whenever the sign industry wants something that is not allowed by existing regulations or might not pass through our existing variance systems, these credits are mentioned. Now is the time to put these to rest, not make our community liable for any more blank checks. Until the people have spoken, we make a few simple requests. We ask the sign companies to put a self-imposed freeze on any new signs until the people have spoken, allowing them to hear what this community has to say. We would also ask that, in the event that they do not wish to put this freeze on themselves, the city council would enact a freeze, moratorium, or whatever you want to call it, whatever it takes to allow the people you represent to speak. We ask that you hear their voice, and we ask that you check out the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Fred Thorstensen.
Good evening. My name is Fred Thorstensen. I live in Rapid City. I'm an architect. I've been in Rapid City for 35 years. Built my architectural firm here, based on trying to create a quality environment in this community. And I stand up here in front of you because I would like to encourage you to work with us to try to enhance the signage in Rapid City. I speak here as a citizen who doesn't feel that the citizen's voice is being heard. I'm one of 67,107 citizens in Rapid City. There are five representatives on the sign board, or the, whatever, the liaison or the sign, what is it?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc committee. Great. Thank you. The Sign Ad hoc Committee, where there are five representatives of 17 sign companies in Rapid City. I don't feel this is equal balance. I don't feel that the public has an opportunity to have their voices heard. I want their voices to be heard. I'm not here to tell them what it should be, but I think that there is, the petitions that are out are offering a good alternative to the direction that things are going. I'd really like for you to impose that moratorium on new signage, the freeze on new signage, so that you can wait until the vote in June allows the public to tell you what they want. It will be clear. I don't know what it is. I'm not telling them what it should be, but they need to tell you what it should be. I will. I'll vote. I've sat in a couple of the meetings at the ad hoc committee, and the public is not being heard there. Please, stop this until they have a chance to tell you what they want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred. We also have a speaker request form from Lisa Modric.
Thank you, mayor, and my aldermen and city council members. I am pleased to be here as a citizen today, Lisa Modric, and also represent my business, Modric's Travel. A year and a half ago, I had noticed that there was a variance going forward that affected a sign that was already oversized, and I am in the travel and tourism business, and I get to hear what our tourists say when they come to Rapid City and when they leave Rapid City, as I do our own people who are traveling in and out of Rapid City, and what they had to say about how we look. We represent a city in magnificence. We're in the Black Hills of South Dakota. We're along a national park. We have our forest and our monuments. We have so much that our citizens are proud of, but we bring our representation forward with how we look, and our off-premise billboards are becoming a part of what our citizens are seeing, and they're actually responding to that. Along with that, on Mount Rushmore Road, we've got this major project that all of you have been so supportive of, and we keep fighting forward for that as well. We want 2014 to give us a new roadway, 2015 with a phase two. We want to beautify that. We want to put safety into that. Now's the time for us to take a look at what we're going to do with the big, oversized billboards, and it's all around the city. So as a citizen of Rapid City, I want to make sure that we take a look at what is going on with our current situation. The situation that's been before, every single one of you, whether you've been here for years or you've only been here for a few months, go back to the council before you, and before you, and before you, and now you've got another council possibly ahead of you. Are we gonna keep going through this over and over and over again, or are we gonna finally let the people who've been speaking so outspokenly to you say, "Here's an idea. Take it. Let's seal yours. Get this off your plates. Go get some other work done that you need to do, and let's put this in an ordinance form so it can't be varianced out anymore. It doesn't come before you anymore." So we would really hope to see you grasp this as a citizens movement and support it 100%, because that's what this initiative is. We see it as part of our current present and future. We want to take the dinosaurs of yesterday, which are those big wooden billboards. We've got the dinosaurs of today, which have some real oversized issues that are noncomplying, legal or not, and then there's these future dinosaurs, and some of our decisions we're making today are the future dinosaurs of tomorrow. And if we don't take it on through ordinance and clean it up, this is gonna be before you again next year, and the year after, and the year after, and your children's years. Think of our future, and thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Karen Gunderson Olsen. And Karen, nice to see you.
Thank you.
And the floor is yours. Please identify yourself for the record.
Karen Gunderson Olsen, citizen. Everywhere I go in Rapid City, I'm hearing people complain about billboards. People are saying they are too big, too busy, and most of all, too many. If you ask your friends and neighbors why they live in Rapid City, one of the first reasons is always the beauty. Pine-covered hills, gorgeous rock formations, colorful vistas give Rapid City character and uniqueness. But increasingly, billboards, giant off-premise intrusions, interrupt the natural beauty and uniqueness of Rapid City. Billboards didn't suddenly happen. They appeared slowly through special interest exceptions, variances, and in some cases, through total disregard for the rules. These parasitic contraptions have crept into the natural settings of our beautiful community, and now you can hardly look in any direction where the natural beauty isn't being plastered, covered, or hidden by commercial ugliness. One of the most interesting aspects of this, one of the most interesting aspects of, excuse me, one of the most disheartening aspects of this special intrusive form of signage is the sheer disregard for one of western South Dakota's most important industries, tourism. The number-one tourist complaint about western South Dakota and Rapid City is too many billboards. Travelers are appalled to see every beautiful natural feature interrupted by billboards, often advertising products and services in a manner that would make our pioneer forefathers and mothers hide in shame. As smartphones, GPS, and other technologies become faster, cheaper, and more available, if we as citizens don't make our voices heard, a small number of companies will fill every beautiful space left with some kind of appalling visual clutter that people don't really need because the information is available in some other, much less intrusive, form. In 2011, billboards are the noisy boom boxes of the '80s. You can't get away from them. As we consider billboards, it's important to understand that South Dakota believes in sensible, fair, supportive business. State law wisely understands that a healthy economy must make itself known, but South Dakotans, through the South Dakota codified law, recognizes the people's right to set boundaries, to regulate, which is the wording of the law. We aren't talking about on-premise signs, signs that let customers learn about products and services, signs that are on a business premise. We are talking about billboards, signs that have nothing to do with commercial activity of the premise. Citizens of our great city are fed up with billboards, billboards that are big, popping up everywhere, and making bushels of money. It's an interesting fact that billboards aren't taxed. These gargantuan structures stand tax-free. Well-funded, bullying special interests are keeping it that way. You hear about the rights of private enterprise, but unlike everyone else in South Dakota who pay their fair share, billboards are taxed.
Karen, that'd be done. If you could just wrap up your remarks.
Yep. I'm asking for reasonable regulation, and I believe that hundreds of Rapid City citizens agree. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Rod Pettigrew. Good evening, Rod. If you would please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
I'm Rod Pettigrew, and thank you for your time tonight. I'm a local business owner, and I was a member of the first task force, and I'm a member of this second task force as well. Upon starting my service on the task force, I became very open-minded. I believe that the billboard issue was only part of what we were supposed to address. There are many other challenges with the sign code, such as banners, temporary signs, rough signs, and the list goes on. I believe there is plenty of sign clutter in Rapid City, and I was looking for ways to regulate all types of signage in a way to make it possible for private business to survive and advertise their services, but also to do this in a very civilized manner. At our last task force meeting on March 2, we had a private citizen explaining to us that he's trying to promote his seasonal business with the current sign code and is not able to do so. There are other issues that I believe we could make, there are issues that I think we could address that would make signs easier and more friendly to use, making signs more easy to access, and also making it less time-consuming for the city staff to issue building permits or sign permits. Unfortunately, the sign companies have an agenda. We all know these are public meetings where anybody is welcome to attend. We have come to know many of the sign company representatives on a first-name basis, because they're at every meeting and they speak at every meeting. I believe they should be considered paid lobbyists, as they are there in force at every meeting. meeting, and they're always making public comments, which is what they're welcome to do, but they're also passing notes back to members of the Sign Code Committee to their own representatives. It is my opinion they are always stirring the pot to keep us, the Sign Task Force, off of our job. They are facing anti-billboard issues across the United States and are very well-organized, have big pockets to fight any type of regulation in their industry. The sign company's interest on this issue is purely economic. The citizens' interest on this issue is quality of life, safety, and appearance. Several council members have stated that if billboards were an issue, they'd be getting calls or hearing about it from their constituents. Ask yourself, or better yet, ask your neighbors, ask your coworkers their opinions on billboards. I have never heard anyone say, "I love billboards. Let's build more of them." I find it interesting that on the previous Task Force, we recommended that the sign companies forfeit four sign credits for a new billboard. They cried loud, and they fought this offer. A few meetings ago, I offered up the Davis Plan for regulating billboards. For those of you who are familiar with the Davis Plan, you will know that it is very reasonable and gives a solution to utilize the credit system. It does offer up more than the four credits the previous Task Force recommended. It is my opinion that the billboard companies reviewed the Davis Plan and believe the plan was too aggressive or restrictive.
So Rod, that would be time if you could just go ahead and recap your comments.
So in a moment of strength, they were able to pass or agree to accept four credit, four credits for signs. I have more to say, but I'll just stop with those.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Norma Thompson.
How are you doing?
I'm fine. Please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Norma Thompson. Undoubtedly, all of you have heard basically what I'm going to say, but Rapid City is at a crossroads where we can follow the examples of some of the nation's more attractive cities, which have very strict zoning and planning rules that preserve their beauty. As you've heard me mention before, scenicamerica.org, I read on numerous articles that are on there, and how business communities are getting together to work on enhancing their signs by reviewing options and making them smaller, easier, readable, and more attractive, and in the process greatly removing the visual blight and distraction to drivers, as well as generating pride in their community and in their accomplishment by working together and every day seeing a rebirth of beauty in their hometown. Alaska, Hawaii, Maine, and Vermont all prohibit billboards statewide and still draw people from around the world to their scenic wonders. Each of these states has prospered in business and tourism and attributes part of the success to the billboard bans. The Hawaii Department of Transportation commented that tourism is important to the economy of our state, and the state's business community understands the need to protect and preserve the beauty of the islands. Each new billboard that is constructed tarnishes our communities and spoils our countryside. Moreover, each new billboard reinforces the perception that ugliness is the price of progress and that our quality of life depends on deprecating the very resources we most value. This false choice serves only those who benefit from blight, and it encourages us to accept the destruction of all scenic, environmental, and historic resources, except those specifically set aside for protection. It encourages us to believe that only parks and protected districts and not the places where we live and work and play deserve our care. People are tired of watching their streets and scenic roadsides transformed into oversized yellow pages. Attractive communities and unspoiled scenic vistas are critical to our quality of life. Both encourage us to appreciate and maintain beauty and the natural environment. The biggest threat now facing America's communities and highways is a proliferation of digital billboards. If research proves that these signs to be unsafe, governments could face significant liability and negligence issues if traffics, if accidents occur in the vicinity of the signs, and additionally, if the signs must later be removed because they are deemed a hazard, the cost of compensating sign owners could be enormous. Scenic America recommends that to protect ourselves from potentially catastrophic costs in the future, that governments on all levels should enact immediate moratoriums on these signs until it is known for sure whether or not they pose a hazard to the motoring public.
Norma, that would be time if you could just go ahead and just cap up your remarks.
I have a friend who continually calls Rapid City a crown jewel, and I do feel like so many other people in our community that it's worth fighting for, and I hope, I think there's going to be more than hundreds of people that are going to come out if they get a chance to vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norma. I do not have any additional speaker request forms for the general public comment period. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Anyone else? Want to make sure everyone has an opportunity. If not, thank you, everyone. We will move on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 1 through 57 inclusive, 1 through 57 inclusive. Chair would look for motion to open the public comment period on the 1 through 39 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms on 1 through 39 inclusive. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to any item 1 through 39? None? The chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 1 through 39 inclusive, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're onto the consent calendar. This is items 1 through 36 inclusive, 1 through 36 inclusive. Chair would ask if any items need to be pulled from the consent calendar. I'm showing 22 and 35 from staff. Is that correct? Okay. Any others? Let's go, Mr. Brown, 35?
Thirty-five.
Yep, thank you. Any others that we need to pull from the consent calendar? These are items 1 through 39 inclusive. We have pulled items 22 and 35. If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 36 inclusive, with the exception of item 22 and 35. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 22, we'll go to our legal and finance chair, Deb Hadcock. Could you please read that in?
Twenty-two is to confirm appointment of Allison Marsland as Assistant City Attorney, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to be sure that everyone on the council was aware this item is on the agenda. Council President, Mr. Kroger, Alderman Davis were involved in this election, and Ms. Marsland is set to start on the 14th.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deb, would you please read in item number 35?
Thirty-five is to acknowledge raffle request from Crazy Horse Memorial, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be abstaining from this motion since I'm serving currently on the Crazy Horse Memorial Board.
Okay, very good. We will make sure that the record reflects that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes with Gary Brown abstaining. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're onto the continued consent items, items 37 through 39. We'll look to staff to see if we need to pull any of those items. Nope? How about from the council? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent items, items 37 through 39, per the recommendations on the printed agenda. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're onto the non-consent items, items 40 through 57, 40 through 57, and the chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 40 through 57, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We do have a couple speaker request forms. The first one is from Cara Hatch, item number 46. There again, just a reminder, we do time this to three minutes, and so when you come up, if you'd please identify yourself for the record, and then the floor will be yours.
Hi, my name is Cara Hatch. I live at 222 Patton Street. I am here today once again to voice my objections to the various requests made by the developer on the Mahoney lot. For almost a year now, I, my husband, or both of us have been here to object to all these changes that have been made or requested for the lots adjacent to our property. I have brought in letters, signatures from other neighbors that are opposed to these changes, but our opinions go on deaf ears. It seems like anything the developers want, they ask for, they get it on a silver platter. So, I'm here speaking my piece, so to get my three minutes in. You're making it look like a trailer park with six lots, not four. You have not considered access for the utility lines if you make these six lots that run between the two blocks. The parking, if you give them the variance to maintain the street width at 24 feet, will become atrocious, is not the best as it is now. I do also, that's my piece, thank you, I also have a letter from a gentleman in the neighborhood who was not able to attend and asked me to bring it for him.
Thank you. If you could go ahead and give it to Charlene down there, we'll make sure that becomes part of the public record and get it to all the council members. Thank you, Mrs. Hatch. We certainly appreciate it. We also have a speaker request form from Munchy Sarah, item number 48. Item 48, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, fellow councilman, Munchy Sarah with Black Hills Power. I'm Director of Energy Services. Basically, don't have any comments. I just want you to know we're here at Black Hills Power to help answer any questions. I'm also here with Stephen Dunn, our project manager, and Mark Sartor, our manager of engineering, so just available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Also have a speaker request form on item number 40, Jason Lambert. Eric and Jason, if you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
Certainly. My name is Jason Lambert. Speaking about chickens, I just wanted to voice my opinion that I am pro-chicken. I think that the addition of chickens would be complementary to the community, allowing a local source of what I think is a food that everybody would eat on a daily basis. And in terms of sustainability, I think that Rapid City could be the poster city, perhaps, for a more sustainable way of getting food in South Dakota. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. We also have a speaker request form on item number 40, Rebecca Dargatz.
Hi, Rebecca Dargatz. I am also speaking in favor of the chicken ordinance. I believe there'll be more information later on, the specifics, but I think it would be great for Rapid City. I'd like to start a family, and I'd like to be able to have pets for my children that we can keep outside. Usually, dogs and cats that you keep outside tend to wander around. I believe there's an ordinance that they're supposed to be leashed, and a lot of people don't do that. But I would like to have chickens in our backyard, and of course, without roosters and in coops, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. I have no further speaker request forms on any items 40 through 57. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on any item 40 through 57 inclusive? None? The chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 40 through 57 inclusive, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're under our ordinances, and item number 40, and we'll go back to our Chair of our Legal and Finance Committee, Deb Hadcock. Item number 40, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 40 is first reading the ordinance, number 5714, allowing the keeping of chickens in the city of Rapid City, and I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everyone, both at this council and in the committee or at the community, who has voiced their views regarding this ordinance. It's only through this type of meaningful dialogue that we can continue to form Rapid City into the community we want it to be. The discussion has raised many concerns regarding the keeping of chickens in an urban environment. Some of the concerns are valid, and some of them are based on myth. I will attempt here to dispel the myths while outlining the valid concerns and showing how the ordinance addresses those valid concerns. The first myth is that chickens are noisy. It's not the chickens that we're most familiar with the noise of, it's roosters. Hens make a soft clucking noise. Hens are in their coops by nightfall, and I will add that the clucking noise that hens make is easily drowned out by lawnmowers, weed eaters, and vehicles lacking proper mufflers. The noise of a rooster is a valid concern, and thus, per this ordinance, roosters are not allowed. The next myth is that chickens are messy and smelly. The waste certainly has an odor. However, the volume of waste is minuscule when compared to cats and dogs. Chicken waste assimilates easily with soil and is a great fertilizer. When you assimilate chicken waste into soil, the odor decreases immensely. However, since the accumulation of waste is a valid concern, the ordinance addresses that. And per the ordinance, it addresses the maximum number of chickens, which is six. It states that the floors and walls of the coop shall be kept in a clean, sanitary, and healthy condition, with all droppings and body excretions collected on a daily basis or more often if necessary to maintain a sanitary and healthy condition. Droppings and body excretions will be placed in a fireproof container until transported off the premises. The next myth is that chickens attract rodents and predators. The truth is that rodents and predators already exist in Rapid City and are attracted to any unprotected food source, like bird seed, dog food, cat food, open trashcans, fruit trees. There are many preventative measures to nearly eliminate this concern, mainly through coop design and specialized feed containers. This would be the same concern that any other responsible pet owner would place on their food. The next myth is that chickens decrease property values, and there's simply no evidence that The next myth is that chickens will create a health hazard. Chicken coops are small and clean, especially when they have loving owners, and through that, disease, I'll say in spite of that, disease is not even, I don't want to say it's flat-out invalid, I'll say, as a general thing, disease from chickens is invalid. People will say, "Oh, avian flu." Well, there has never been a case detected among wild birds, domestic poultry, or people in the United States, so another myth dispelled. Another thing I've heard is that chicken coops will be eyesore's. Generally, city coops are small, clean, and attractive because the people who build them love their pets and want to be in close proximity to them. They are attractive and inexpensive to make. The ordinance, however, just as some residents don't want a shed or doghouse next to their property line, chicken coops must comply with the same zoning setbacks, and that is in the ordinance. To close quickly, chickens suffer from a PR problem. People think they're dirty, noisy, smelly, and the truth is that a few cared-for hens are cleaner and quieter than one big dog or the three neighborhood cats that poop in your flower bed. Plus, you get eggs.
Thank you, I think. Well, that was well done there, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Additional comments?
Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
In Part C under the ordinance, 1C, it says the licenses expire on the 31st of January of each year, and the licenses may only be renewed in the month of December. So if, so when you buy a license and you spend $5... So, if, so when you buy a license and you spend $5 on it, it doesn't run for an entire year?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney. Jason, do you understand the question?
I believe I do, yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
And, first of all, let me point out that I think that that should, that's a typo. The original date in the draft was that the license would expire December 31st. So I think that that should be altered so that the license can only be renewed in January. But to answer the question directly, yes, if you buy a license in November, it will expire on the 31st of January, so you would have to renew it again, you'd have to pay another $5 fee.
Thank you. Alderman Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
With most of our other licensing, does it run, does it run just for the calendar year, or does it, does it expire at a certain time? I mean, does it create a problem for, for the city if we say you have a license for a year if you buy a $5?
Mr. Green.
I don't believe it creates a problem. As I sit here, though, I don't know if I can answer the question as to whether or not most of them expire in one year, or whether they have a fixed expiration date. I could certainly answer that question in between first and second reading, though.
I would be interested in an amendment to address, address that. I won't offer that tonight until you have a chance to research it, and then I would like to yield the remainder of my time on the egg timer to Alderman Costello if he'd like to finish his comments from earlier.
Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question would be for our City Attorney.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I read the present end-around chicken prohibition that we have right now on the, on the docket right now, or on the codified law in Rapid City, basically, gets around the chickens by not allowing them within 150 feet of any structure. Assuming that that law was put in place because of a substantial welfare to the community, is there, is there a particular reason that that law was put into place? Is there a particular health or welfare risk to the community of why that chicken ordinance was put in place in the first place?
Jason.
I'd have to pull the original ordinance to see if there's any explanation as to what the council, council's motivation at the time was. I suspect it's a health and welfare ordinance, but that's speculation on my part.
That'd be the only concern I have with this. I don't, I don't think that we should, if a person wants to have six chickens and it's not a substantial health or welfare issue to the community, I think it's well within reason, but somewhere along the line, somebody, I'm assuming that if, if they actually were within the proper guidelines, felt that it was, and so I guess I'd like to see that. And the other question, Mr. Mayor, I would have for the City Attorney is...
Go ahead.
Are, are chickens illegal in the state law? Or is this just a city ordinance that, I mean, is the state prohibit someone from having chickens in their backyard?
Mr. Green.
I'm not aware of such a statute, but I can tell you, I haven't honestly researched that one.
Okay.
I'd be surprised if it was, though.
Well, I think that there's time. I mean, obviously, this is a first reading, and I'm not sure whether it'll pass or fail or whatever the case may be, so maybe we'll have time to look into that, so. I think that's the two questions that I'd like to see answered before I can move forward on this. I don't, I don't see any problems with the predators or those types of things. I think those are myths from a person who had a mountain lion shot in their backyard with no chickens. And I don't have any chickens in my backyard, so.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Deb Hattcock.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We did ban ducks at Canyon Lake Park for feces, smell, and many a things. And I'm not seeing that ducks, they seem to have a health hazard, and they seem to affect the water. I mean, don't get me wrong, there's, there was a lot of ducks and they were overdone at Canyon Lake, but, and, and that was a feeding ban, but I'm trying to figure out if you have six chickens in every yard and you have quarter acre lots, that's a lot of chickens. So, is there going to be something about feeding the chickens or something like that pretty soon? I just, it's like in one sense, I think, I can see the sustainability, and I think that's good, and I understand that coming from a family that, you know, grew up poor, it would be nice to have chickens and eggs and different things, but in the beauty shop, it's, in listening to people, the contaminants of surface water and the different things that we had with the duck issue seems to be some of the questions that have been brought up. I did find out that a lot of people, including myself, didn't know a lot about chickens. The stockpile and manure, Mr. Brian Schnell brought up some really good, good questions at Legal and Finance, the stockpile manure, what do you do with the chickens if you don't want the chickens anymore? We don't have a, you know, chicken place where you can just drop them off. Like you get your dog or cat and pay some money, or, not trying to be funny, but that is kind of funny. And the process on the complaints of the noisy chickens and the, I mean, is the police going to take the chicken away like they do the dogs? I don't know. I understand there's no roosters, and the backyard and the patio issue, how far the chicken coop is from that, from people's backyard and patios, again, of quarter acre lots, what are those lots on size going to be? Effect on property values, do people, I don't know, and, and you brought up a good point, Mr. Costello, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate your work on this. The property values, are people going to want to move next to people with chicken coops or not? I don't know. Again, there's, there's still some questions I need on this to be answered, and, and I still will look it up, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, though, Aaron, and I think there's some questions that still need to be answered, what happens after the fact. But again, we did have a huge issue with ducks and their issues, and now we're bringing forward chickens, so.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. One of the things that Alderman Costello brought forward was, in Fort Collins, where they were legalized in 2008, they have a population of 138,036 households applied for chicken licenses. So, I don't think there's going to be a stampede to, you know, I'm just thinking the problem created by this ordinance isn't going to be that big. I do have concerns, though, about guidelines for the chickens themselves, because I know that they need, you know, so much square footage, because I don't want, I know you can overregulate, but at the same time, I think if you can plainly state what some requirements are for the maintenance of the animals, that helps people to know how they need to build, you know, their living, their living quarters. And so I would like to see the square footage per chicken measured out, and I think the chickens are supposed to be able to have access to and from their little coop, you know, so they can go from the, to seek protection, and that's missing in this ordinance, which I would like to see that spelled out. I also see it as a, I just don't see that it's going to affect that many people here in Rapid City, because when I read the ordinance, that the chicken coop has to, the poop has to be cleaned up every day or more often. I know I can just go buy my eggs somewhere else that I, even though I like the idea of chickens, I know it's not going to be for me, because I can't make that kind of commitment to my chickens. And so, but I also see it as a possible creation of jobs, because perhaps students and all can shovel coops and provide other chicken-esque services, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Never in my wildest imagination did I expect that I would get as many contacts about chickens as I have in the last 10 days. There have been many from, quite, quite a few from out of town, quite frankly, and most, and a few from in-town that were outside of the ward that I represent. Wholeheartedly, those in the Ward Three that I represent not only said no, but don't you dare. Obviously, I'm, I'm listening to those that elected me to represent them. Some of the concerns that they opposed have been laid out as far as the, the disease and the, the myths that, Aaron, I thought did such an excellent job of, of bringing question, if not dispelling. But one that wasn't mentioned, and it came up in an earlier discussion today, was that without a conditional use permit and trying to go through that long and drawn-out a process, the neighbors really don't have any say in this whole arrangement either. So there, there really comes into some things with the ordinance that, that it will be very, very difficult for me to vote for it. In fact, I intend to vote no. But as I was looking through it, I looked at some of the things that come to mind from, from a business standpoint, and from a very logical approach, is that if we were going to introduce a new product, we'd probably test-market the thing. We'd probably see if it was a viable way to bring a product to light. And that's one of the things I would suggest to the author of this, is that possibly, we, since we have five wards in town, and just for lack of, of putting some numbers down, five wards in town that we say, all right, let's do a test-market for a year with five families in each ward. That you've got 25 families that are allowed to build the coops and raise the six chickens the way this ordinance would be. Let it go for a year, so that you have a full year of all the different weather conditions that the neighbors are able to weigh in on, and a year from now, the sun sets. And at that point, then we'll bring forward an ordinance that says, yes, allow chickens, or, you know what, those aren't myths, we shouldn't be doing this. At that point, I think that it would be very simple also to take the applications in advance and have something as simply as a lottery to pick the five families in each of those wards. That would also give us an idea as to how much interest there really is and where the interest is. At that time, at the end of the 12 months, we'd also have the opportunity to discuss it with the neighbors and see if, in fact, do we need the neighbor input before we allow this type of thing? So, in, in closing, basically, I think some time, some data, some neighbor input really will give us a more informed populace and a more informed council, and hopefully, the myths will be gone, and we'll be able to make a decision that, that is valid rather than just very emotional. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Do have a quick question, actually, for Alderman Kroger, given that he's a kind of in-resident expert on real estate and also one of the real, leading realtors in the area. I guess I would ask if, if you know if there is any effect on property values that you've ever heard of with chickens?
Mr. Kroger, would you like to answer the question?
Actually, I do have a property out in Rapid Valley that has a rooster next door that I've had a lot of problems with. Every time it seems like it's showing, the rooster has to grow. So, I, I haven't had to deal with hens, but I would, I would say, yes, it's going to, it's going to affect property values. In my mind, there's no question of that. I mean, you know, some people aren't going to care, but I would say a far greater amount of people are going to care that there's chickens next door to them than not. So, yes, I would say that it's going to affect them.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, you still, Mr. Mason, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the input. I, I guess I was just kind of curious about the statement that it wouldn't affect property values, and I figured it wouldn't hurt to ask somebody that would likely know. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I'm going to go to, let's see, is there, I'm going to go to Gary Brown, who has not, not had the opportunity to speak. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. In my ward, I too have had probably running 75% to 25% of the emails and the phone calls I've gotten against this ordinance. So, from that, I'm, I'm like Alderman Davis. It seems to be the, the biggest push in my ward is, they have some questions, questions that have been brought up. What, if I don't want chickens next door to me, what am I right? Nothing in this ordinance gives a neighbor or somebody any, any recourse right now. What are you going to do with the chickens if you don't want them anymore? What happens? Turn them loose? Like one neighbor said, my, my neighbor didn't want these rabbits anymore, so he just opened up the cages and the gate, and out they went. Well, I can't quite see rabbits versus chickens running around out there, but I will be voting no on this, because that is the direction that so far I'm getting from my constituents in Ward One. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Bill Watt.
Thank you, Mayor. I represent Ward Three, and, and like my counterpart, Alderman Davis, the majority of the folks in Ward Three have been anti-chickens. If nothing else, this chicken ordinance has got a little humor going up here, which you don't see a lot of, but I appreciate it. I know a little bit about chickens. I don't know a lot about chickens, but I do know, in my, in my younger days, when I lived on a ranch, we had chickens, and we had them in our backyard, and we had no roosters, just chickens. And, but we had a lot more than six chickens. And one of my jobs as a little boy was to clean the chicken coop in that area, and I did not enjoy that job. And I don't know if we do go forward on this, I do think we will have an odor problem. I guess the scenario that I was running through my head today, and I told my scenario to a few councilmen, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Smith own a home, and they have it for sale. Now, the Browns next door to them have a chicken coop, and every time the realtor shows the Smith's home, they see the chicken coop in the Browns' backyard. And I think if it only affects one homeowner not selling their house because of a chicken coop, that would be worth me voting no on this ordinance. And so, the way it stands right now, until somebody convinces me otherwise, I will be voting no on, on the chicken ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel compelled to weigh in on the chicken ordinance one more time. And after being on the council for a while and seeing the plight that the Humane Society has gone through with dogs, cats, those types of things, I'm hoping that the council gives the same types of considerations when they're talking about dogs, cats. How do you clean up the cat mess? How do you clean up the dog mess? If you have a neighbor with two or three dogs running around, they rip the yard up, they have fecal matter that has high nitrogen levels, all these types of things. So, I would just expect the same type of respect for the Humane Society and the job that they do in the community and what they're faced with. The chicken ordinance, I think it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. There are people that have rights and opportunities to use and utilize their backyards, and if, if they're responsible individuals, I don't think that we should be making a, a rule for the irresponsible people. It reminds me of the boss that used to send me the emails, that said, I came into his office one day and I was in a suit with my shoes shined, my tie tight as I could be, and my hair cut, and I actually looked nice that day, and he looks at me, and I stood there, and I said, "Am I okay today?" And he says, "What's wrong?" And I said, "Well, you keep sending me these emails about the dress code." I just, I just don't think that there's a one-size-fits-all, and I'm not, I'm not here to advocate for the chickens, neither for nor against. I just say, if we look at this thing, let's look at it from the factual matter, not the feelings of, or of us as individuals. Let's look at it as a factual matter. Let's look at the evidence, let's give it an option, let's give it a shot to look at the whole scenario. If it is, if it has been set aside as a health or welfare problem to the, to the society or to the citizens of Rapid City, then I'll be the first one to vote no for it. But I still think it needs the same opportunity that dogs, cats, whatever animals are in the environment have, so I appreciate it, and I just want people to give the same consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the council for all the dialogue here. This has been very informative and helpful, and as Alderman Watt said, humorous at times. But I want to thank Alderman Wyffenbach for bringing about the strange duality about this entire conversation. With any comment involving chickens, you could easily replace dogs. I mean, it's, it's easy to find an uncared-for, or a property that has dogs on it that aren't properly cared for. And we don't ask for a third of these restrictions for anybody to get a dog. I can go get three dogs and put them in my backyard. I don't have to tell my neighbors, I don't have to ask my neighbors. So it's, right now... So it's, right now, I'm, I could understand the concern, but I'm a bit befuddled as to why we would consider including that in an ordinance. I had to laugh, Alderwoman Haddock, at your comment about every house having six chickens. Boy, wouldn't that be a scene if every house had three dogs and two cats? But it just doesn't happen. So I understand you're trying to bring to light an issue of contamination from feces. The difference between our backyards and Canyon Lake is that our backyards don't directly run into the, the, the water source for our drinking water, which was the case at Canyon Lake. Plus, six chickens is a far cry from the, the hundreds of geese and ducks that existed at Canyon Lake. As far as stockpiling manure goes, right now, I could get a truckload of cow manure and dump it in my backyard and just let it hang out until spring comes. I don't even have to put it in my garden if I don't want to. I could just let it hang out there. Regarding the setbacks, I believe that currently, city code designates the setback of being eight feet from the side property line and five feet from the back, back property line. It's, that's the setback for any structure and including dog houses, sheds, playhouses. I don't see why a chicken coop should be treated any differently. A valid question, a very valid question. What do we do with chickens where an owner be determined unfit? Well, I would, from my litmus test of the community of people who are passionate about this, there'd be no trouble finding someone to take those chickens in and raise them When constructing this ordinance, I, I approached it with the mentality of having something that is restrictive but not prohibited. Prohibitive, which is why Alderwoman Peterson, there isn't no strict guideline concerning the, the living quarters themselves. There's still a level of, of creativity involved here and I would like to think that anyone who is interested in raising chickens knows that it's not a simple deal. These chickens are not going to raise themselves and they need to seek counsel in how they go about constructing an environment they can raise happy chickens in. Because everyone knows eggs that come from happy chickens are more nutritious for you. The most interesting and compelling aspect of this conversation came from Alderman Davis. His thought of a test market is certainly palatable. And I think that is an item which certainly warrants more discussion and I would be open to that as we move on to second reading. And I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and actually, thank you, Alderman Costello, for segueing exactly what I wanted to talk about, which was the test market idea. I too would actually like to explore this a little more thoroughly. I must grant that Alderman Costello is valiantly arguing his point and doing a, a wonderful job of it. With that, I, I guess with anything that's different or new, I, I realize that there's always resistance to that. So with something like this, I, I too would be willing to at least explore the idea in a test market and controlled setting to see where it lands. And also with a sunset stipulation, not just a sunset stipulation, but also stipulations including that any sort of violation would be included in the review process at, you know, such given time, maybe a year or even six months. But I would like to continue with exploring the test market idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. I have no further lights. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Motion on the floor is for approval, a first reading of ordinance 5714. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Costello.
Aye.
Quaker.
Aye.
Wa.
No.
Brown.
No.
Mason.
Aye.
Peterson. Wyfenbach. Davis. Kroger.
Motion fails on a five to five vote. Okay, thank you, everyone. Item 41, please. Forty-one, please.
Forty-one is second reading of ordinance number 5712 requiring a disclosure statement be provided to owners of properties when the city of Rapid City or the Rapid City Planning Commission is the applicant requesting the property be rezoned by amending section 17.54.040 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval dealing with item number 41. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 42, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Forty-two is second reading of ordinance number 5709 regarding supplemental appropriation number four for 2011, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item number 42, which is a second reading of ordinance number 5709. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask our finance director a question.
Okay.
My question is, is can she tell us where our budget for, not our budget, but where our actual expenses are for 2010, what the number is?
Pauline, do you understand the question? And are you ready to answer it?
I believe I do understand the question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the 2010 annual report that I handed out earlier and that we'll be speaking on later, just a little bit later, the total expenditures for the general fund at this time, let me see if I can find the right page, is $42,856,232.43.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wyfenbach.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 43, please.
Forty-three is first reading of ordinance number 5713 repealing chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts and adopting a new revised chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval of this item number 43, first reading of ordinance number 5713. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 44, please.
Number 44, second reading of ordinance number 5710 to allow the use of teleconference meetings by adding section 2.08.025 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. In thinking about this over the last couple of weeks, my question is, logistically, how, how is the voice going to be recorded for, for our streaming audio of, of the meetings? Do we know how this is going to actually work?
Let's address that to Jeff Barbeer. Mr. Barbeer.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know that we've done that level of research to this point, Alderman Quaker, but we certainly, I, what I'm told is the technology is certainly there and we can work it out. We, we haven't maybe gone to the, like I said, to the final steps of figuring that all out, but I'm, I'm sure it can be done. IT has, has told me it won't be a problem. We can have it be part of the permanent record, I'm sure.
Yep. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir? Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderman, Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm really in favor of the concept, but I have a, a real concern. Although I understand that this is what the state law allows, that it is for certain council meetings, legal and finance, public works, including executive sessions, it's the executive session portion that really causes my concern. And if that was out, I could support it, but with it in there, I cannot. And the reasons being very simple. Number one, executive session, there are specific reasons why we go in. There are certain confidentiality's that are expected to be there. If I or any of my cohorts are not in that meeting and we're attending that executive session by teleconference, there's no way to know who's on the other end of the line. Now, as an elected official, that brings a, a certain level of uneasiness on my part that I'm able to do the things then and ask the questions and give the opinions that executive session requires. Secondly, I'm, I'm afraid that by allowing it an executive session, we ask for a, we, we bring ourselves into a certain level of, of liability exposure that I'm extremely uncomfortable with. And an example might be something that a, an employee's personnel issue, maybe they were wrongfully accused of something and it's being discussed in executive session and that leaks out. Now, I understand, the individual who was on the teleconference would be held responsible for that. And that's very simple, that we would come back on that person. But I don't think the fact that that person is held responsible negates our responsibility to have a private executive session and protect those personnel issues of our employees. And I, I really think that employee would have an opportunity to come back on us, especially if it was wrongfully accused, but we were discussing it because possibly it was a, an accusation between two of employees and they, maybe we had to suspend them during the investigation, for instance. Are we hurting their reputation? That, that would be, I'm afraid, where the, the, the question would come into play. And I, I just think that the, the city is asking for a potential lawsuit that could be extremely dangerous. If we took the executive session out, if that was amended out, I could support it. But as it is, I won't, will not be. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question for Alderman Davis then. So can you please clarify and explain how by using teleconferencing, just as our state legislator does, how that poses more of a risk than already exists with the current situation where it is possible that any one of us on this council could possibly leak out of executive session even though it is a class-two misdemeanor from what I'm assuming here by looking? What's the greater danger? I mean, doesn't this really just come down to a trust issue among each other? I'm, I'm just curious if you could clarify that for me.
Mr. Davis, would you like to answer the question?
Jordan perpetually wants me to use his clock time, so I will.
The, I think the difference that we're looking at is that when we all enter into exec,
when we move into the caucus room, the understanding is there. And I, and the, the city has not opened themselves up to anything by moving into a caucus room. By passing an ordinance that specifically says, "We're going to go into exec, but we're going to broadcast it to an unknown direction," whether we'd lose in, excuse me, whether we'd lose in court, Jordan, probably not. Would we have to defend it? Absolutely. And that's my concern with it is, are we venturing into an area that we don't need to? Once again, I like the idea of the teleconference, I'm in support of it up to the point of the executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Still, floor is still yours.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to ask our city attorney, Jason Green, then, in response to that, prior to the moratorium that was set by the previous council, did the city council ever have any legal issues as Alderman Davis describing of that nature?
Mr. Green.
I'm not aware of any.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman, Deb Haddock.
Thank you. Can I ask Jason a question?
Sure, go ahead, please.
If we take executive session out of this, does this violate the open meeting law?
Mr. Green.
It does not.
Okay. Why I say that is, someone would be voting the whole way through and then executive session would come up and they wouldn't be able to go in executive session on that teleconference and then they come out and vote. Or are we saying right now that, Jason, that these people cannot go in executive session that are teleconferencing, but they're gonna come out and vote afterwards?
We don't vote in executive.
We come out and vote on some of the issues. So what would we do if that person couldn't be in executive session? Abstain?
Mr. Green.
Abstention would be one alternative, yes.
I'm just saying, the bottom line for me is, if you're going to be able to teleconference in a meeting, you gotta see the whole meeting. You gotta hear the whole meeting and when you vote on it, you should be able to be in the know on all of it. And to me, I think, I've just, I've just talked to the county people, I've talked to the state people and they don't have this issue. And if, if there's, and I've always said, and I've always been agreeable on taking minutes in executive session, because that would be easy too, so they could come back in about minutes in executive session to know some of those things and come back and be able to look at that would be nice, but we don't have that either. So again, I think if we, we can say trust, we can say whatever we want, but it's our ability, and that's why this was brought forward, to be able to basically be here for the constituents in our ward. And yes, we do have another person in our ward representing us, but it's always nice to have two and people have different views and different votes. So I think we need the executive session in here. I think this is a way to represent with constituent accountability and I think it'd be good to hopefully move this forward.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman, Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. May I ask the attorney, Green, a question, please?
Absolutely.
Okay. Jason, with this ordinance, is there any requirement that the council people attend the entire meeting via teleconference? Can they call in for, you know, for say the first half or the second half?
Go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The only requirement is that the Alderman notify the person that prepares the agenda in advance of their intent to attend the meeting. The ordinance doesn't speak specifically to attending parts or all of the meeting. I think the idea is that the Alderman would be expected to attend the entire meeting.
Okay, but it was, well, I'm just envisioning if you're traveling or something, that you might only be able to participate in part, and so that's why I was wanting to clarify that you are able to do that or if it forbids it, so you're saying that you can do it? Is that correct?
The ordinance doesn't speak to it one way or the other. So how that works in practice will ultimately be determined by the rest of the council.
Okay. One, the point that Alderman Davis brought up, I, I think of people sometimes when you're on the phone, you know, when they're on the phone and you're like in the kitchen and you can hear everything that person on the telephone is saying even though you're 12 feet away from it. And so, so I could see where that could be concerning and it goes beyond a trust issue if you, if you would be in a situation where you weren't by yourself or whatever and other people could hear what was going on in executive session just by being present. So that, I do have some concerns about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Alderman, Ron Wyfenbach, who has not had the opportunity to speak yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to this to say that we strike the executive session, but we add the, the taking of minutes to the executive session. And that'd be my motion. Can I speak on that or do I need to wait for a second?
We need to wait for a second. Is there a second?
There.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Now, Mr. Wyfenbach, the floor is still yours.
As I sit here and I listen to this, I understand that, and again, I'm going back to the, the history of, of my being on the council here and executive session, we, we are doing the public's business behind closed doors for particular reasons and I understand that. But what happens is we get CRS or SMI, whatever you wanna call it, and a recall of these types of things would, would be handy if, if necessary. So I understand that, as speaking here, listening to the conversation, and the light bulb kinda popped on for me about, you know, the, you know, I could see where if a particular council person was upset with someone, they could, they could do a lot of damage to a conversation that was taking place out of context, because if you're not there, the context of the conversation may change a little bit. I understand that, so I can appreciate that. But I do think that, you know, taking of the minutes in executive session would, would, would counteract some of that person's being gone, so they, they could get filled in on what, what took place when they were, were not there. Or if, say for instance, there was a future legal issue, that issue could be handled simply by going back to those minutes of that executive session meeting, because I've been in too many of them where we come out and we forgot all about what we talked about. And that makes it real tough to do the public's business and have an open, honest discussion about it and, and provide as much transparency to these people that we possibly can, so. So that would be my reasoning for that. And I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would have a question for Mr. Green.
Go ahead, please.
Excuse me. Is the taking of minutes legal?
Mr. Green.
By state law?
The state law doesn't speak directly to it. It speaks to the minutes of your meeting. I think if you take minutes in executive session, that there's a very strong legal argument that those are going to have to be made public and published in the newspaper. So that would defeat the purpose of having the executive session.
I guess there probably would be, need to be some time to, to research that. So maybe I should, well, we'll go forward. I'll let the discussion continue. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of comments here, especially with all of the previous discussion. First off, the idea of having teleconferences with public meetings is, is so common to myself that frankly, I, I don't understand the, the hindrance to using technology that is readily available. You know, I understand the idea of a luddite argument here of just being against technology, but frankly, it's, it's never a very good argument and it doesn't last very long. This is personally, and this is my opinion, but this is the way the world's going, whether we like it or not. You know, I grew up as a young, young man, all the way to my current age, watching C-SPAN. I've seen courtrooms call in people via teleconference, you know, for expert testimony. This is a common day thing. And frankly, one of the things that I've actually asked our city attorney repeatedly is why we can't just strike the moratorium altogether instead of going through the process of even writing an ordinance? Because as stated previously and time and time again, state law already allows this. Our state legislators do this. Our county does this. Other cities in the state do this. I stand corrected. State legislators don't anymore?
State legislators have never teleconferenced when they're on the floor or when they're in committee. And I'll turn to Mr. Brown, who also served in legislature. I used to chair and, I'm not sure, and there again, it might be a procedural rule, but I know that the state legislator, legislature does not allow teleconferencing on the House floor or the Senate floor.
Thank you. I stand corrected on that one. But it, it does seem like something that this is the direction that we're going to, one way or another, that technology is there and all we really have to do is, is use it. The other thing that I, I will comment about the previous comments of Alderman Davis is that the one thing that concerns me about eliminating the ability of allowing the person teleconferencing to not be included into executive session is you're, I feel very strongly that that's, you're excluding representation. And, and I think that, that has to be addressed with this. That if we do completely eliminate that, how do we, how do we answer to our constituents that, as Alderwoman Hadcock pointed out, that there is two people of each ward? How do you respond to those constituents that say that you've eliminated half of my representation by doing that in, in matters that are crucial, not just with employee matters, but also contracts and land acquisition that the city may be discussing that's vitally important? And lastly, with the taking of meeting minutes, I just wanted to make one last comment on that, that I have been supportive of that from the day that I've taken office here. And I will continue to support taking meeting minutes in executive session for numerous reasons. But especially based on this council's past, I, I see a, a absolute need for that to happen. And I think looking at some of the past events that this council's been through, that we've had more than a few arguments and debates about what has or has not occurred in executive sessions. And just on my short time here, I've heard many of those arguments and I think it would be helpful. Thank you.
Further discussion, Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Council President. One part that I'm still trying to get my head around here is during initial discussion on this, this ordinance, there was an implied lack of trust for a fellow council member to represent what they feels best for the ward. But then that trust gets turned around when it comes to executive session. So don't trust them on one side, trust them on the other. Still getting my head around that. That being said, if I understand correctly, the, right now, we're, we are voting on an amendment. Is that correct? I think that the conversation on whether to take minutes in executive session is one that needs to take place. But I'm not so sure it needs to take place piggyback onto this bill or onto this ordinance. So from that, I, I cannot support the amendment. And since we are discussing the amendment, I will yield the floor at that point.
Thank you. And that is correct. We are debating the substitute motion on the floor. And that substitute motion, Charlene, I'm going to have you read that back to me. Is to take minutes in executive session and what's the second part to that?
Friendly amendment was to strike the executive, strike teleconference in the executive session, but to take minutes in executive session.
Thank you. Everyone, everyone clear on the motion? I'm going to go back to Alderman, Aaron Costello. You still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Perhaps I misunderstood. So right now, if we were to, if I were to call a question and that went through, we would vote on the ordinance as presented with the friendly amendment?
No. What we, what we're taking up right now is the amendment only.
Amendment only, okay, thank you.
So the, the vote would be strictly on the amendment. And then if that passes or fails, we would either vote on the original motion unamended or amended.
I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. I'm going to go to Alderwoman, let's see, they have both spoken. So I'm going to go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's okay with a secondary, I would, I would remove my friendly amendment at this time.
All right. Okay. Is there any objection to basically withdrawing the amendment? If not, the chair will deem that the amendment has been withdrawn. We are back to the original motion, which is for approval. Further discussion on that motion, Bonnie Peterson. Okay. Seeing no further lights, the motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Quaker. Wa. Brown. Mason. Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis. Hadcock. Kroger. Costello.
Motion fails on a six to four vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Item number 45, please. Deb, if you would, please.
Forty-five is first reading of ordinance number 5715, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of the Chapter 17 of Rapid City Meniscus Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by C-Tech Engineering Services for the City of Rapid City for a rezoning from Park Forest District to Low Density Residential District located on Skyline Drive at Florham Street. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? This is item number 45, first reading of ordinance number 5715. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 46, please.
Forty-six is a request by D.C. Scott Company Land Surveyors for Northern Development LLC for a preliminary plat located east of Wood Avenue between Lindbergh Avenue and Patton Street. And I move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Could I ask Ms. Elkins a question?
Sure, please go right ahead.
Marsha, if you could refresh my memory, is this plan is to build six small homes? Is that what's going on here, or is it getting ready for mobile homes?
Marsha?
I'm not aware of any proposal to put mobile homes on. At this point in time, it is simply a plat. A recollection is that there is a planned development on this property and that we'll need to go through that plat, the planned development process before any development occurs.
Does approving this plat increases the, the likelihood that they could put mobile homes on it? Or does it not have an impact?
Marsha?
It increases the number of units that may be placed on the property. I don't know that it addresses the issue of the mobile home specifically. Really doesn't change that. Those regulations are separate from the plating process. But it does go from two parcels of record to six.
And Alderwoman Peterson, you still have the floor.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have. I just will express concern that I hate to see these neighborhoods all chopped up like this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor, item, item number 46 is for approval with stipulations. Approval with stipulations. Seeing no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? One, no. Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson. Thank you. Item number 47, please. Give him the mic, please.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Forty-seven is update on 2010 annual report.
Can we have a motion?
Oh, move approval.
Okay, and this is to acknowledge. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to acknowledge your report. Let's go to Pauline, our city finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to take you back a little bit as to why I'm standing before you tonight. In February, we had seized permission to request an extension of 30 days from the state so that we were given enough time to do all the adjustments that would be necessary to give you a more accurate snapshot of the city's finances as of the end of the year. And that, that extension request was denied. So then I came before you to let you know that the extension was denied and that this would be coming forward. And so you have it before you today. Keep in mind that because you have it before you today, we have not completed all of our year-end adjustments. Some of the adjustments that have not been made are fixed asset adjustments, some of the debt adjustments, accounts receivable and accounts payable adjustments. Those are the larger ones that have yet to be done. But as of, as of what we could get done in the timeframe that was given to us, that is what is before you today. The, one of the requirements also is to look at our debt and the cash balances that the city had at the end of December of 2010. The last two sheets of your packet have that information. The long-term debt, not, this does not include the two SRFs that we are not making payments on yet. The total debts as of 2000, the end of 2010 was $163,378,509,93. Of that amount, $74,622,378.83 is governmental activities, which would be the 2012 fund, CIP, and our tax increment districts. Then we also have the business-type enterprise loans. That total is $88,756,131.10. If you look at the additions for the year, there, there was a large addition for the airport that was done at the end of the year of approximately $18 million total. And then also, there were some TIDS that were certified in 2010 that we had to recognize the debt on those. So that is before you. The cash on hand as of, actually in the bank at the end of 2010 was $81,201,495.37. And that sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. But be, be aware that that is split among about 80 different funds. And so like each enterprise fund, the general fund, 2012 fund, it's split among all, all of those. So it's not just money that you can spend however we want to spend it. So because the other information is not complete and there will be changes between now and the time that the auditors come, if you have any questions on those, I would be happy to answer them. I just would prefer not to go into a whole lot of detail, knowing that some of those numbers will change.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, let's go to Alderwoman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. If the motion maker would accept a friendly amendment, I would like to have this linked to the item that's on the agenda. It's currently not linked.
Charlene, it's not linked? Okay, we'll make sure it gets linked.
Yes, I would like to point out, I was until 10 to 7 tonight working on this, so that is why it's not linked. So my apologies.
Yep. It'll be linked and become part of the public record. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Sumption, for your hard work on this. I do have a question, though. The debt is, and am I reading this right, and is that $163 million?
Yes, sir.
And our total budget this year was about $163 million too, correct?
It was close to that, yes, sir.
Thank you. The other question I had was that the adjustments, now, will that come out with the comprehensive annual financial report that we get? Or is that when the final adjustments will be done, or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I will continue to do adjustments to these reports and then we'll, I'll actually have additional reports for the auditors when they come in. They will come in either May or June to audit the work. And then you will have the final numbers after that.
Thank you, Pauline.
Anything else? Very good, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Finance Director.
Go ahead, please.
The, the deadlines that are set in place, are put in place by who?
State statute.
Okay. The state statute sets these deadlines, so I'm assuming that if, if there's necessity in the future, I'm sure they're not going to give us any more extensions. I mean, in the future, like, say, next year or whatever, so.
Thank you. That is my understanding as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for, basically to acknowledge the annual report. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I'm just reading this as, at the end of 2010, we had, undesignated was the $10,106,683.88.
That is the undesignated fund balance. That is correct.
So that would be all the grants and the different projects that we have not paid for yet. Is under, undesignated?
The undesignated on the annual report is different than undesignated cash as we refer to it in the budgeting process. This is fund balance, which includes receivables, payables, that type of thing. The cash, if you look in the general fund, we have the cash and cash equivalents of $543,000. But then we also have investments of over $8 million.
Right. So investments, meaning there's $2 million something left in, undesignated?
That would be correct.
Okay. And then we still have the 4.2 from before, unencumbered cash? How does that fit in? Or is that in the undesignated fund balance?
That is in the undesignated fund balance.
So you have, so you have the eight, the two left over plus the 4.2? Or you have the, in the eight is the 4.2 of unencumbered?
The 4.2 is not necessarily cash. It is unspent budget authority. So it's not going to show up in a cash number. But because the revenues, if the revenues were more than the expenses, it would show up in the undesignated fund balance.
So on the unspent budget authority, you have about $8 million, $8 million in unspent budget authority as well? And you have $2 million left out of that? Is that what you're saying? Which brings it, do you see what I'm saying?
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying. We have a total of about $8.5 million in cash that we can use. $6.2 million is about what the, the council has designated as a reserve amount that you guys like to have for operations, for cash flow, or for, in case we have an emergency and need the money. So we have about just shy of $2 million of undesignated cash.
Okay. Again, you included the 4.2 in the 8 million, which brings us, basically, we have $2 million in undesignated cash. And I, I know we had the 6.2 in reserve and we're not using any of the 6.2 for any of this.
Not at this time, no.
So what is the 427,668?
That is what we use to balance the budget for 2011, which we would use of the undesignated cash balance. There's about $2 million of undesignated cash balance. When the council approved the budget, they put in their ordinance that would use about $427,000 of undesignated cash to balance the 2011 budget. So if the revenues come in the way they're projected and the expenditures go out the way that they were approved, we will use $427,000 of the cash.
So I think I understand that, because I remember we started at $42 million. We balanced our budget basic, or we ended up with $42 million with still about 2.2 that we needed to still pay projects with. The $45 million was our total amount of budget with the $2 million that was built in there. So basically, we're always running ahead by about $2 million, is what it looks like to me from, from basically what we were talking about, that you have to build those, not reserves, but the grants and the other projects that were basically carried over from, from 2010 to 2011. So basically, ten to two thousand and eleven. So basically, what they're saying is you have to, you included in the forty-five million, but you still have to bring it forward and make sure for state law or whatever you were saying, that you still needed to put two million in there. So basically, every time that we have a budget, we have two million extra in there, just to make sure the state requirement is in there for the, the grants and the other things. Am I correct?
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's not necessarily always the case, that we'll have that two million dollars. So it will vary depending on how tight the budgets are and how much the revenue is that we bring in.
Yeah. But I guess when we explained it, it was, again, we had forty-two million, we still, we had the four point two basically spent. We could be over that, and that two million dollars for next year could be spent, and then we could be going into reserves if we spend all that anyway. Basically, if we go over the forty-seven million from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, in the new budget, am I correct?
If you, if you spent all the dollars that you had budgeted in two thousand and ten, yes, you would go into the reserves.
That would be time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Pauline again.
Sure, go ahead, please.
In reference to the TIDS that are listed on this balance sheet from...
Pauline.
My question, Pauline, is, are these TIDS, like, basically, are they assets based upon the amount of money that's sitting there waiting to be paid out, and then the liability the same? They all look the same. They all match, the asset versus the liability. I mean, do we run them through, we run every TID district through the city? And so when the money's sitting there, it's an asset, and then it's on the other side, it's a liability, because it's going to get paid out the other end?
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When a developer comes in and certifies their TID costs, we set up the fixed assets, and then also a liability for that, for that loan. When we get the money in, that is asset to offset the liability, and as we pay it, obviously, it'll decrease the, the liability.
Thank you. Anything else? Let's go to Alderwoman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to offer a substitute motion to link this to the agenda and continue to legal and finance for further discussion.
Do we have a second? Yep, we have a motion and a second. Motion on the floor is to link this to the agenda, which we will make sure we get done, and to refer this back to legal and finance. So basically, it's a continuation motion. So just, and I'll give you a floor, Alderwoman Quaker, just a reminder, the motion needs to be, the discussion needs to be narrowly focused on why we're sending it back to committee. With that, Alderwoman Quaker, the floor's yours, sir.
Thank you, and I'd like to state why I would like to see this go back to committee for further discussion. Pauline, you've clearly put a lot of work into this, working on this all the way up until a few minutes before this meeting started. The public hasn't had a chance to process this. The council hasn't had a chance to process this. And I think it'd be a good idea to continue this to committee, to allow for further discussion. And thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Permission to ask Ms. Sumption a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Pauline, when will we have the complete two thousand and ten annual report? Because this, right, is not the complete one, it's...
This is a preliminary, that is correct.
Okay, so when is that usually done?
Pauline?
The audit usually is done by September thirtieth, and the reason why it has to be done by then is because of our grants requirements for filing our financials. In the past, I, the history with Kato Thorsonson is they typically have it done sooner than that, but it's been, I have not worked with, with Kato specifically on the cities here, and so I'm not sure of their timeline. They usually come in in May or June, though, to do the work.
So this is basically as good as it's going to get for the budgeting period?
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, my staff and I are going to continue working on this, and so that way, when the auditors come in, we have it as good as we can get it. And so it's not that, it's going to sit there until they come, because that's just definitely not the case. There may be an opportunity to have an updated version before the budget, and more than likely, it is possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question's for Pauline.
Uh huh. Go ahead, please.
Or maybe even you, Mr. Mayor. If we, if we don't, I mean, if we don't approve this, does it not meet the state deadline, then, or?
No. Just, you know, the motion that we're looking for tonight is just acknowledgement of this. As Pauline has said, these are not the final numbers. I think the appropriate time to really get into this is probably once the final numbers are in, because quite honestly, we're going to be talking about numbers that more than likely could be changing on us, so.
Right, right.
The motion tonight was strictly to acknowledge the report. Is that correct?
That is correct. If I might respond?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, my responsibility, as I am required by state law to present this to you at the first meeting in March, I have presented it to you to the best that we could do within our time constraints. I don't think that if you continued it, that it would be a problem, because I have met state statute requirements by presenting it to you tonight.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not here to chastise anybody, but the time constraints don't change. If we've got, if we've got some issues down there, Pauline, like if it's the software or those types of things, that the council needs to, to get you the tools to get this properly administered at the correct period of time, I guess maybe we should bring something forward. So if we move it to legal and finance, I'm okay with that. I just didn't want to make sure we met a deadline, missed a deadline, so thank you.
Very good. Further discussion, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I also don't mind if we acknowledge the report and move on in a certain sense, but in the investments part, on one fifty-one, eight million dollars, I would kind of like to know where we spent that in, in a detailed report, because that's going to make the difference on that undesignated cash on the bottom, and it also is going to make a difference of what comes forward for two thousand and eleven on the budget. So if we could get a report on that, or I think that would be helpful for the council of how we do undesignated cash and how that is brought forward. So like I said, we could move this forward if you want, but, or continue, I, doesn't matter either way to me, if I could just, and I think for the councils, that we could get the eight million dollar detail on that. Thank you, Ms. Pauline.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Sumption, for bringing this information forward. I just wanted to make a few quick comments about the information that has been presented. The debt has been something that I've been concerned about for some time, and I realize that I have reiterated this point repeatedly, and I may be beating a dead horse. But if these numbers are correct, and I, I do fully understand that there may be adjustments, that, that would mean we have a hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and three dollars and ninety-three cents, according to my calculations, more debt above and beyond what we have budgeted at the hundred and sixty-three million point two for the two thousand and eleven budgeted total. This concerns me. I hope that as we move forward with the other budget hearings, that we'll have some more discussion on how to address this. I personally also do not feel that our constitutional state limit is something that we ought to shoot for at a billion dollars, but we ought to keep ourselves in check and keep in mind that we are now at a one-to-one debt to tax revenue income. Thank you.
Thank you. And there again, just for, just for the audience and those listening, I think it's important that we clarify, a large amount of the debt is actually through the enterprise funds, and matter of fact, the reason that the debt dollar amount has actually gone up is we have gone out to bond for two of really Rapid City's largest public improvement projects in our history. One was the forty million dollars for the water treatment plant, which is actually reflected in that number, and the other one, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the airport also went out in two thousand and ten, which that bond amount was, was ten million or?
There were actually two different bond issues for about eighteen million dollars total.
Million dollars. And so although Alderwoman Mason makes a very good point as far as what the total debt limit is, if you actually look at the dollar amount, it would have been just as easy to, to go back and take a look at it. Every time that we bond for two thousand and twelve, in the next round of two thousand and twelve, we could be adding fifty, fifty to sixty million dollars to our debt, which typically gets paid off within the next seven years. So very good point. You know, there again, the bottom line is the fact that the reason the debt is increasing this year is because of the large municipal projects that are moving forward. But with that, motion on the floor, any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to make sure this gets linked and also send this back to legal and finance. Pauline, let me ask just a simple question. Is there going to be anything that you can add at the next legal and finance meeting, or?
There probably will not be any new adjustments to this. All the adjustments were done this morning, and it just takes time to compile it.
Okay.
So there probably won't be any more adjustments for the next meeting, but we, we will be still working on those.
Very good. Everyone clear in motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number forty-eight, please.
Item forty-eight, South Boulevard addition is to approve the request by Stephen Dunn for Black Hills Power for a fence height exception to allow a nine-foot-high fence and/or wall in lieu of a maximum four-foot-high fence and/or wall in the front yard, and to allow a nine-foot-high fence and/or wall in lieu of a maximum eight-foot-high fence and/or wall in the side of rear yard in the general commercial district located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Cleland and Tower Road. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations, and that is my motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to record to reflect, I'll be abstaining from voting as my employer was involved in the last keep architecture on this project.
Very good. We'll so note. Let's go to Alderwoman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to thank much Mark, and I'm sorry, I forgot the other fellow's name. Pardon? Okay. Just for the time that was spent on this, they had this in a different location. The neighbors there had some concerns with it, and they really went to bat here to try to find something, a place that they can make this work and still provide services to the citizens in that area there. They've come up with what I think is a, is a beautiful project. I would have every reason to believe that this project will look as is the artist's rendition. They're going to take what I would consider a blighted corner that's been blighted since I've been a kid, and I'm, I'm sure we've all been in that area there. And, and they're going to add sidewalks to the area, which is going to make the, the walking area around this area to the restaurants and, and motels and those things more convenient for the people in the neighborhood. It's going to remove it away from the housings in the neighborhood, and with the, with the walls and those types of things, will keep the sound barriers down. So again, I just want to applaud Black Hills Corporation for working with the neighborhoods over there and bringing something to the city that I think in the end is going to be very nice. And the people on Mount Rushmore Road, I think, I believe are on board with this, and they're going to be happy it'll add to the, the vision that they have there. So again, I thank you, guys.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is approval with stipulations dealing with item number forty-eight. Any further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to second Mr. Wyffenbach, because it's very refreshing to see a business work so closely with the neighbors and all to bring in a good product. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Ellis, you're up, or Pauline, you're going to do the bids. Get.
First item is for the CSAC restroom ADA upgrade project. We actually only received one bidder on this, base, and so the recommendation is to award the base bid plus alternate one in the amount of ninety-four thousand dollars to RCS Construction, Inc. And this did have an engineer's estimate of one hundred thousand dollars.
Yep. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you. I just appreciate all the work the mayor's committee with people with disabilities have taken on this project, this one, the civic center project with the theater and the downtown sidewalk. That's three major ADA projects that the mayor and Robert Ellis and Dale Tech moved forward with the mayor's committee with disabilities. I was there helping, but I can tell you it moved forward because the mayor made it a priority, the downtown made a priority, and Robert Ellis and his team made a priority. So we appreciate that. These things are happening, also because this council voted on them. But I was there, and they were very appreciative of the mayor and Robert Ellis and Dale Tech moving these projects forward. They are huge for Rapid City, and mayor and this group got them done. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for to award the bid to RCS Construction for a grand total, which is the base bid, plus alternate one for a grand total of ninety-four thousand dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is the Adam Street and North Street Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project. We received five bids on this project. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand and fifty-two dollars to Mainline Contracting, Inc.
We have a motion and a second to award this contract to Mainline Contractors, Inc. for a grand total of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars, and the engineer's estimate was three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Okay? Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Next bid is the Heights Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension. We received four bids on this project. The engineer's estimate was one point six million roughly. The recommendation is to award the total base bid plus alternate bids one, two, and three in the total amount of nine hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents to Mainline Contracting, Inc.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the base bid alternates one, two, and three to Mainline Contractors for a total dollar amount of nine hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next bid item is the hot mixed asphaltic concrete. We received two bids on this. The estimated cost was one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. The recommendation is to award the bid in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars to Hills Materials Company.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to Hills Materials Company for a total bid amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next bid item is the ready mixed concrete. We received two bids on this project as well. The advertising authority was sixty-three thousand dollars. The recommendation is to award the bid in the amount of sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents to Pete Lean and Sons, Inc.
We have a motion and a second to award this to Pete Lean and Sons, Inc. for a grand total of sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is the limestone gravel, which we received two bids on. The advertising authority was seventy-five thousand dollars. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of forty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars to Hills Materials Company.
We have a motion and a second for approval to award the bid to Hills Materials Company for forty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next bid item is the utility cut Portland Concrete Replacement Project. We received five bids on this. Estimated cost was seventy-five thousand dollars. Recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Brewer Construction.
We have a motion and a second to award this to Brewer Construction for a total bid amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We also had an item fifty-five A, which is somewhat of a repeat, isn't it, Robert? Okay, Pauline, go ahead.
A while back, we did do, have this bid before you. At that time, the recommendation to was concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for Highmark, Inc. However, they have been declared a non-responsive bidder by South Dakota DOT, so the recommendation is to concur with the South Dakota Department of DOT in the amount of sixty, six hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents to Stanley Johnson Concrete Contractor.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
Approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that motion is to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation to award the bid for six hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents to Stanley J. Concrete. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you might be able to answer this question. Is Highmark Inc. Is Highmark, Inc., a city, not, I mean, have the same criteria that the state has on this?
I'm going to actually go to Robert Ellis, as this was literally put on right before the meeting, so I'm not familiar with it. Mr. Ellis?
This project has federal funding involved with it. DOT handles any of the bid award. It's married with a surfacing project and a utility portion. This is the utility portion. I believe they were declared non-responsive because they did not sequester the appropriate number of disadvantaged business enterprise quotes for the project, which is a federal requirement, so they've been deemed non-responsive by the DOT.
They're not by the city, though?
Not by the city.
Right. And Robert, just to recap, so what you're saying is the reason they were declared non-responsive, non-responsive bidders, they didn't meet the federal guidelines as far as?
Soliciting quotes for disadvantaged business enterprise.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So it's Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Was Highmark notified in advance of tonight's meeting that they would not be awarded this project because of this situation?
Yes, I visited with the owner this morning and just kind of made sure that he wasn't planning on protesting this with the DOT. He's not. He's actually going to be involved with the utility portion of this contract through Stanley J. Johnson contract, so they'll be working on the project.
So how long are they not going to be allowed to work for this city? I mean, being declared a non-responsive bidder, usually we've gone through our own process.
This would be project-specific. It would only be for this project, and it's the DOT who's declaring the non-responsive, so it has no bearing on future city projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, everyone. Okay. The motion on the floor is, there again, the motion is to actually concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation, Transportation's awarded the total bid of six hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents, so actually it will be the State Department of Transportation who will actually be awarding the contract, correct? Okay. We're just concurring. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does get us through the bids. We're on to items from Mayor, and item number fifty-six, which is the ad hoc Green Cities Task Force Report to the Council. Eric, are you doing this?
I am, and I've got my co-chairman, chairperson Suzanne.
Okay, Suzanne. Come on up. Are we doing a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Please identify yourself for the record before you begin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thanks for sticking with us this long. We hope we can show you some pretty things and some great ideas tonight.
Why don't you, before we start, please go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
Suzanne Marley.
Thank you.
Eric Haikus.
Thank you.
We're really excited to be here. We've got a lot of energy, even this late in the evening. I was going to run up to the podium to reflect my energy at unveiling this. It was also the case when they appointed this committee, many of us jumped on board. Sustainability is huge. It's the future. Our time today is small, but the things we're going to challenge you with are large, so.
And before we go into our presentation?
Suzanne, can you pull that mic down?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Short people have no reason to live. Thank you, Randy Newman. Before we go into the presentation, I wanted to thank the appointees to the task force and all the volunteers who worked on our subcommittees. Basically, the city received thousands of hours of time from engineers, scientists, architects, educators, planners, executives. We had a fantastic committee. The kinds of things that they produced, as Eric said, we're all really excited about it. We did follow the direction that you gave us, which was to give you a roadmap. There are no mandates, there are no taxes, there are no requirements or costs in any of this. These are ideas. But the thing about a roadmap is, it's just an option unless you have a destination. Until you know where you want to go, nothing happens. You just have this map. So while our task is finished, the job for the city, the citizens, organizations, and government is just beginning. So, thank you. And thanks to our group who are taking up the back row here.
So if it pleases this council, we'd like to take you on the last year's happenings of the Green Sustainable Cities Task Force. So we actually have a movie to start with, so. We're going to do a little bit of an ad hoc to the ad hoc by voicing over at time to time.
This all started when a number of members of the council and city government officials attended a Green Cities Conference in Portland. There was a lot of inspiration that came back from Portland, that city, and the conversation about sustainability got started. You gave us the assignment to create a roadmap for the community for our continued green and sustainable efforts.
Some of the folks that attended this were actually sitting here today, some of you council persons, growth management director, public works director, they were all there, and they kind of left it to a grassroots team for the next year to formulate. They wanted a litmus test of what's really important to the community. They left it to us to come up with that group, and we actually came up with a lot of ideas, and we corralled them back onto the subcommittees to make the suggestions happen, so.
So what we came up with in our beginning statement was to create this roadmap, and the way we thought we would enlist and elicit what the community wanted was first to just celebrate that Rapid City is a great place to live, it's a great place to visit and to do business. We wanted to find out what was already happening in the community, both by city government and private citizens, organizations. We wanted to think of ways to really foster environmental stewardship. Things have to be economically sustainable as well as ecologically, and things that will fly in Rapid City. So those were our ideas. And we just have some pretty pictures here. We do have a lot to celebrate. This is a great place to enjoy the outdoors and be connected to the natural environment, arts, culture, history. We're here.
Of all the communities I've lived, it's my favorite one, so. You notice these key words, educate, investigate, evaluate, formulate, these are all action words. And we started by celebrating, so what are we doing well already? You know, our recycling facility is one of the best in the nation. Our stormwater is one of the best in the area. We've got an active trout stream that runs through our city. People bike to work, people carpool. There's a lot of great things we're already doing.
And there's a lot going on in the private sector as well. One of the things that we wanted to do was make sure we understood what private citizens, what businesses, what organizations could bring to the table, and not make this just be about what government is doing or what government is requiring you to do, but how government might lead and inspire people. And certainly, we have a lot to celebrate in terms of the private sector already doing things. School of Mines has gotten awards. We've got things going on downtown. We have an urban orchard. We have a private group doing a recycle booklet for us and so forth. We've got a lot going on here for us. Eric just went through a number of the great activities and projects already taking place in the city. You know these, you've supported them, voted for them. They are a lot of what makes Rapid City an attractive destination for visitors and a great place to raise a family. So when we first put this slide to show together, it was around Christmas time, and we kind of sang this to the tune of the twelve days of Christmas, but what we have done in a year is have two dozen open meetings, we have twelve recommendations for you, we had eight subcommittees, seven stories in the radio, television, and newspapers, six big community events, we have four project proposals for you. We tried to get your summary down to three pages, but I think it got a little longer. We did two city cleanups, and we have an extensive list of links and resources that we will be delighted to show you in a little bit here.
Suzanne, can I tell them about the portal yet?
That's, we could take them to the portal if you want to.
Okay. Just a second. Our community outreach has been really exciting. A lot of you attended events at the Dahl, Western Dakota Tech, Our Green Future, there was the Green Cubed series with the Dahl, which was exciting, Our Past Sustainability, Our Present Sustainability, Our Future in Sustainability, and boy, did a lot of people turn out for those events. The metric that we got to formulate the roadmap is a result of everyone's input, so, and that means everyone, the public at large. Can I tell them about the portal?
Yeah.
I'm dying to tell them about the portal. Instead of giving you a huge, massive folder of specifications and requirements that cut a slice through what everybody's doing today with sustainability, we've done something even cooler.
Here it is.
We have a portal at the library. It saves paper, and it's dynamic. As standards change, I mean, we've seen LEED evolve three, four times now. As things change, so will the portal. And the portal will link to the Rapid City website for resources. So if I ask myself, where do I take my plastic bags? Well, check the portal. Check the link. These are resources that everyone will have under their fingertips. So instead of a dusty pamphlet or document that's just going to get tabled, we have a dynamic source of information that continues to be updated and people contribute to.
Here's just an example.
I love the portal. Just love it.
And we want to just give a huge shout out to the Rapid City Public Library. Stephanie Benz there did an incredible job getting all this uploaded. This links to our report. Everything's active, ready to go. So we hope this will be a good resource for the community as things continue. Oops.
So the challenge was met about halfway through the year. The mayor sat us down and said, okay, this is great. I love what you're doing. We've got a lot of exposure, it's exciting, but I want tangible stuff. I want stuff that people can identify with. So we've come up with four pilot projects that we've actually narrowed down from a list of many. It's my real pleasure to introduce the first one. I do have a flash drive, though. Is that going to be okay? If I use my flash drive?
Do you need to put the flash drive in and run something?
Yeah.
Where's Roy? Roy, where are you?
I think they can put it on here.
I was going to say, why don't you just put it in the computer, it's probably the best thing to do.
The first pilot project is the Downtown Recycles Project. This one was actually a fantastic collaborative effort, and I have a good friend of mine and colleague, Dan Sefner, here with Destination Rapid City. He was one of the partners in this event. The other partners, Dan, you've got to get up here. Come on, buddy. The other partners, this is our logo, which is kind of fun. The other partners are the City of Rapid City and the, of course, the landfill and recycling facility, but Red River Sanitation partnered up. Essentially, it solves the equation of, I'm a downtown business owner. Do I recycle? How do I recycle? And it's really simple, and I'll let Dan walk you through it.
It's Dan Sefner, Destination Rapid City. It's kind of fun to talk about something that everybody agrees with. How could you argue with recycling? In one thing, being downtown, as Eric mentioned, we've got a great recycling program, we've got everything going in a lot of our residential areas. Now we're moving it to downtown. I give the city credit. We are now getting some recycling disposal units downtown on the Sixth Street project. I believe eighteen of them, is that right, Eric?
That's correct.
Eighteen of them. Our green team reports back to us and states fifty percent of everything they pick up on the street is bottles and cans. That's amazing to me, but it is very, very true. So what we look at now, coming into spring, summer, another great tourist season, is hopefully adding to that. Recycling is such a dynamic thing, and once again, something no one can argue with. I think we need to take a look down the road. What we are doing here is, think of the condensed areas. We've got taverns, we've got many things downtown, and now our recycling, well, in the adage that I tell my wife when she's shopping, of course, the more you spend, the more you save. But in this case, think about it. The more you do spend, if we have more recycling containers, if we have more places where people can drop their cans and bottles, every city in America's got it. We need it. When we increase that, all it does is drop our waste, add to our recycling. We've already spent millions of dollars on our recycling plant. Let's utilize it, utilize it, and make it grow. So what I believe we are on the edge of, with the green team, working the streets every day, picking up bottles and cans, if we add to those recycling containers on our streets, and I don't just mean on the corners, I'm thinking mid-block. I'd like to see some in the middle blocks and key areas, and our green team people can tell us exactly where those areas are now. We didn't have that before. Now we've got guys in the street coming back saying, you know, Dan, here's where it is. It's right over here, it's over here, it's over there. With Red River stepping up, they're putting recycling containers now, or they will, in our alleys, in some of our streets. We now have put some, I actually have some behind our building, and right now we're seeing that to be about half full with residential. So we've gone from the large waste containers now dropping to half the size of waste with more recycling. So it's just making a big difference. So I'm just kind of excited, along with Eric and the green team and the task force, saying, you know what, we're on the edge now of making our downtown a recycling center that people can be proud of, put a logo in their windows. I'm working with the local taverns, and we'll stay pushing on this, that we start to recycle all those bottles and cans after a weekend. And let's do it the way it's done in major cities. And you know, we obviously probably can't force it, but boy, can we encourage it, and I'm all over doing that, and I really support it. The city's been behind it, and I would just want to thank everyone for your involvement.
This project was just a simple effort of getting Red River Sanitation, the City of Rapid City, Destination Rapid City, and our group just in the same room to sort out their differences and say, hey, we can do this, and that's the result, so. Kudos to City of Rapid City for the first sixteen facilities they're going to put in along Sixth Street. Thank you, Robert, and your group. The next pilot project?
And I want to say about these pilot projects that we tried to come up with ideas that were both short-term, long-term, had top-down, bottom-up, all kinds of different approaches to them. So the next one is Green and Sustainable Business Awards. You're all familiar with the Green Building Council and the LEED standards, but it's a very complex process. It takes a long time to get through it. We had a lot of participation in the task force from local businesses, especially a lot of help from Black Hills Power, much attended all of our horrible eight in the morning meetings. And one of the ideas that came out of the task force was, how could you recognize businesses that were already doing something good without them having to go through the long LEED process? So we brainstormed, we don't have a complete vision of this yet, but there would be points to be awarded in the air, water, fire type format, and one of the first things we would like to pass off to our successor organization is to come up with the actual fleshing out of these business awards that you could encourage businesses and organizations to become more sustainable and then to move up through a higher set of points to maybe actually get into the LEED building standard.
So there's a hook on this one. We actually are going to challenge the mayor and this council to formulate a committee, a sustainability committee, that's a standing committee, to, this will be one of their first jobs, is to come up with an awards program. So it's their first job to do.
You want to do Trinity?
Sure. Trinity Lutheran Stormwater Garden. This project is so cool. It is a project that's just off of Main Street. It's basically the parking lot next to Hardee's, and it needs something exciting to happen there, and what's, their facility... And what's, what their facility and a lot of the members of their church want to do is a stormwater garden, one that actually helps cull the effects of sheet drainage on the surface and that sort of thing, and make it visual. Ken Steichen is here today. Ken, do you want to get up and say a word? Okay. Ken, Ken is the kind of the current champion of this project. I have to be completely honest, this project also needs an additional champion, someone who will take this on at a city level to make sure that this is done properly, and they could also use a few bucks, so.
We're looking at trying to incorporate, as Eric mentioned, stormwater collection and runoff from pretty much the entire block area there between Fourth and Fifth Street, between Kansas City and St. Joe, and funneling the water into that vacant lot area that's sitting there now, and using that water to develop a natural park that makes use of native plants and species, and therefore would not require watering, and also enhance the downtown area.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. The last proposed pilot project is already underway, thanks to Eldine Henderson, one of our volunteers, Tim Roach, one of our committee members, Marcia Elkins, and folks in the growth planning department. The neighbors north of Rapid City on North Haines wanted to find a way to incorporate more planning and mixed use in their area and to preserve the natural area around them. This is a longer-term project. Some architectural firms have stepped up to help develop what would be a charrette process where the neighbors will talk and, and come up with some ideas, and it would come eventually through your planning process. It is a neighborhood originating idea, and it is going of its own momentum. So, it'll take a while, but we're just delighted to see that they took on the challenge. We also have some policy recommendations for you. There's a wonderful grassroots element about all this, and we're trying to keep it low-cost and volunteer, but there's a point at which the city needs to take leadership in sustainability or maybe even just get out of the way if there are regulatory obstacles or other things that stop people from doing green and sustainable activities. So, our group talked to folks, and we have a number of recommendations for you. I'll do the first slide, and then Eric can take over. As he said, we would like to see a sustainability committee succeed our task force. This could be a committee made of liaisons who sit on the many, many committees in the city that already do sustainability things, park and rec advisory board, historic preservation, water use, and so forth. So, that's one, that's our first recommendation. The second is that we recommend that you implement the 2010 Solid Waste Management Plan that came forward from that division in city government. The folks there were wonderful collaborators with our task force. They do a great job. They're passionate about garbage and making it less, so we want to point you back to that plan that came to you a year ago. We would like to see a citywide recycling advocate post, and we had some discussions with the superintendent of schools, and I guess there is some work already about a cooperative agreement between the city and the schools to, to work on that. It makes a big difference to catch kids at a young age. We understand that we have to clean the bleachers at basketball games with leaf blowers. There are so many plastic bottles and aluminum cans at the end of a ballgame, and all that goes to the landfill instead of getting recycled. Another recommendation is to discuss a policy that would mitigate loss of greenway land by some mechanism to replace it with other open space of a comparable value. And then finally, or not finally, but fifth, complete the pedestrian and bicycle master plan and implementation that's already underway.
Integration of pedestrian paths, new developments for construction, new construction or reconstruction, in particular in corridor areas such as Jackson Boulevard and Mount Rushmore Road. We ask that we implement recommendations from the city beautification committee for projects such as West Memorial Park, and that we feature local food, locally grown, produced food, and tourist promotions. And we also route city buses to those kind of areas to buy that kind of food at city markets, farmers' markets, et cetera.
So, we're finished with our task. That's the great thing about being on a task force. You do it, and then you can step aside and let others take over. So, we hope that you will consider positively our recommendation that you create a follow-on committee that's a standing committee to talk about sustainability in Rapid City. And we want to thank all the folks who went to Portland and brought back these ideas, all the folks who helped with the great photos, the task force members, and our wonderful volunteers.
Several of which are here today. You could stand up, please. Please stand up, Cynthia.
I know, I'm crying. And that's it. Thank you very much. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate all the hard work that not only you two, but all the members of the task force. And I know that you've been accumulating folks with expertise to, to basically move the project forward, so I truly appreciate your two's leadership plus the hard work of everyone on the committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions, discussions? Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you. No questions, just a lot of thanks and appreciation for all the work you put into this. I know how difficult it can be. I know especially early on, there was a lot of education for this entire community that needed to be done, and you persevered through that, and I just, I commend you for, for your efforts. And I, I love that you came back with, with pilot projects, with one already underway and others very accomplishable. And I think your policy suggestions, I certainly hope they're all taken to heart by us here because as you walked through those, I found myself continuously nodding, yes, yes, something we need to implement indeed. So, once again, it's my sincere gratitude for all your efforts. It, it could not have been done without that, so thanks.
Mayor, can I respond to council?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. I, I think there was some real genius in the mayor's and the council's decision to do this, in fact, appoint a task force. You got your finger on the pulse of what the community wants in asking this of a grassroots team, and I think you got very honest and direct responses and pilot projects in response. They may have been different if this was a more under-the-thum city project. So, great, kudos back to you on that decision, so.
Thank you. We have a motion to acknowledge, please. We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you both so much. Next item on the agenda is item 56A, which is the presentation of the city report card. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to council president Ron Kroger, and I'm going to go down and do the presentation. I will warn you, there's a lot of information. I will go through it very quickly. All the information, including the PowerPoint and the complete studies, are actually online. So, they're actually on the front page of our website if you want to go along and follow it that way, but all the information is certainly available. It's already up on, on the internet. Ron? Okay, soon as we get the PowerPoint up. Right? There we go. There again, please forgive me, there is a tremendous amount of information. There again, it's already online. It was posted late this afternoon. So, we're going to go through this very quickly, but feel free to basically follow along on the internet, take a look at it later on. There again, city report card. City basically wanted to get the opinion, the direct opinion of our citizens, and one of the ways that we could do that is through the National Citizen Survey. And we started by trying to identify really what the survey's objectives are, excuse me, is to identify our strengths but also identify our weaknesses. What do we need to improve on? So, that was really the objectives. The method is we mailed out 1,200 hard copies of the survey. We got 500 and roughly 550 back, which is a 39% response rate, which was actually pretty good. And we were able to create goals, both long-term goals and also immediate improvements to our system. So, that really is what this is all about, listening to the citizens. Now, as you go through and take a look at the report card, you will see that questions and information are sort of grouped into different categories, starting with community, community quality, including public safety, recreation wellness, public trust, community inclusiveness. So, there's a lot of different components, a lot of different things that are bundled together, together there. The other thing is, we make our way through this, keep in mind that not only did we do a survey trying to find out how the citizens believe we're doing as far as providing public services, there were broader questions that really are questions dealing with the community as a whole, not specifically with city services. Excuse me. There again, National Citizen Survey, 500 jurisdictions, provide information regarding the community, quality of life, service delivery, civic participation, unique issues of local interest. Those are all the things that we're trying to basically get out of this report. The goal, identify what Rapid City is doing right, but just as importantly, where we need to make improvements. That's really what this is all about. We cannot be afraid to ask the tough questions. It's easy to basically pat ourselves on the back, but I'll be honest with you, it, it takes really a lot of fortitude for elected officials to stand up and say, what can we do better? And with the support of the council, I thank you because that's exactly what we did. Results overall, there again, just sort of, sort of the really good news. Overall quality of life in Rapid City, 71% of, 71% of the respondents says the overall quality of life in Rapid City was rated as either excellent or good. That's good. I mean, that really is. 79% believe that Rapid City is a good or an excellent place to live. 82% are very likely or somewhat likely to stay in Rapid City for the next five years. That's important. People want to live here. They don't want to move away. Other results. Now, there again, under this, this is community characteristics. In other words, we're talking sort of a broader scope here, not specifically about city government, but basically as far as characters that are reflected within the community. The most favorable ratings, opportunities to participate in religious and spiritual events and activities. Opportunities to volunteer. The least positive ratings for the community, and we're going to do both community and also the city. Employment opportunities, that's a challenge for any community, and the amount of public parking. Does that surprise anyone? Didn't me. There again, results. Civic engagement, 28% have attended a meeting of local elected public officials or other, other meetings. In other words, we actually have a pretty good response of people actually participating in, in government. 96% say that they've helped a friend or a neighbor. I think that's probably common knowledge that in western South Dakota, we, we help our friends and our neighbors. We just do. This is one that's very impressive. 61% have volunteered time to a group or activity in Rapid City. You know, we have more service groups in Rapid City or service organizations than just about any other community in the country. We're very well-known for our giving, not only of our time, but also of our purse. Results, local government, 65% rated city services as good or excellent. I like that number. But now there again, with the good, there's the bad. You know, and that, you know, we're starting off real good here. 73% rated the overall impression of city employees as good or excellent. There again, we always talk about the quality of our, of our city employees. There it is. City services, key drivers. In other words, if we really want the public to get a better perception of what we're doing, what are the key components? And what they've identified is, we need to look at police services because that will have a bigger impact, preservation of natural areas, and economic development. So, what they're saying there is, if you're going to invest additional resources, those are the three categories they're, they are suggesting. Now, we're going to get into sort of the details here. Overall community quality, there again, this is, this is a broad brush stroke here, but overall quality of life in Rapid City, 71% say it's good or excellent, 24% say it's fair, and only 4% say it's poor. Neighborhoods, where you live, there again, what you're looking at is 78% say it's good or excellent, 18% say it's fair, and only 5% say it's poor. And the, the generic question, Rapid City is a place to live? What do you think? Well, what we have here is what? 79% say it's a good place to live, either good or excellent, 20% say fair, and only 1% say it's a poor place to live. Here's another question. If you're going to recommend to a friend, if you want to live in Rapid City, recommending living in Rapid City to someone who asks, 83% say it's either very likely or somewhat likely they would recommend it, 6% would say, ah, they may, may not, and 11% say they probably wouldn't. There again, the question as far as remaining in Rapid City, and we touched upon this a little bit earlier, for the next five years, 82% say they are very likely or likely to stay here, 8% say there's a fair chance, and 11% say there's a poor chance that they're going to stay here. There again, people want to live, work and play in Rapid City. This basically gives you an indication as far as transportation and the perception of how, how easy it is to get around. There again, the ease of car travel in Rapid City, either excellent or good. There again, what you're looking at is 59%, or actually 61%, 26% say it's fair, and only 12% say it's poor. As we're going through these slides, and I'm going to start going a little bit faster because there's a lot of these, you guys, what I tell people is, look for the red. The bigger the red, the more we need to pay attention. The blue is good. The tan means that it's a passing grade, but we could do better. The red means we need to do improvement. Ease of bus travel in Rapid City, there again, good and excellent was good, fair was 35%, poor was 22. I would say that the reason that's probably so high is we don't provide great coverage on the west part of Rapid City, and that's something we want to take a look at. The eastern part of, of Rapid City, we have great bus routes, but on the west side, it's basically bacon park, and that's it. So, we'll take a look at this. And just so you know, the other thing is, Robert told me, we actually, this last week, we actually had the two highest days for ridership ever on rapid transit. What, 1,600 people a day, two different days? So, we're absolutely heading in the right directions. Ease of travel on bicycles, especially for Alderman Costello. If you notice there, 59% say it's good to excellent, 28% say it's fair, and 13% say it's poor. We're working on that because we're putting in actually bike lanes as we are rebuilding our streets. Ease of walking in Rapid City, there again, great numbers, only 11% say it's poor. Billability of paths and walkways, there again, great numbers, only 7% say it's poor. You know, you're talking about 66% say it's excellent to good, 27% say it's fair. Traffic flow on major streets in Rapid City, there again, 47, 47% say it's either good or excellent, 36% say it's fair, and 15% say that it's poor. Community design, transportation, street repair, 3% say it's excellent, 20% say it's good, 38% say it's fair, 30, what is it, 39% say it's poor. Does it surprise anyone? It doesn't me. And part of it is, is the fact that City of Rapid City has probably been ignoring our residential streets too long. And keep in mind, with the support of the city council, starting in 2011, we're going to go from spending $500,000 a year in 2010 to $2 million a year just on residential streets. We also have a tremendous amount of major, what we call mainline construction. Jackson Boulevard will be under construction. East North Street will be under construction. Catherine Boulevard, Canyon Lake Drive, and Amosa. I will tell you, I can understand why that number's high, but on the other hand, quite honestly, we're finally getting to a point where we're going to do something about it. It's taken us some time. Street cleaning, there again, pretty good across the board, only 15% say it's poor. The rest say it's either excellent, good, or fair. Lighting, street lighting, basically the same thing. Forgive me, I'm going to start moving a little bit faster. It's going to take us all night here, you guys. Snow removal, there again, 38% say it's good to excellent, 32% say it's fair, and 30% say it is poor. I will tell you, keep in mind that the, the survey was actually taken before the first of the year. I will tell you, with the changes that Robert Ellis has made in our, in our street cleaning, or actually in our snow removal policies, we have gotten tremendously, we've tremendously improved the perception. We're getting a lot more phone calls. Forgive me, I'm going to start moving a little bit faster, it's going to take us all night here, you guys. Snow removal, there again, 38% say it's good to excellent, 32% say it's fair, and 30% say it is poor. I will tell you, keep in mind that the, the survey was actually taken before the first of the year. I will tell you, with the changes that Robert Ellis has made in our, in our, uh, street cleaning, or actually in our snow removal policies, we have gotten tremendously, uh, we've tremendously improved the perception. We are getting a lot more phone calls saying we're doing a good job now. So kudos to, to Robert Ellis, to, to John Bloom, to Don Brumbaugh. They're really making a difference. And really what it comes down to is, instead of using our snow plows, we're actually using rotor grater, motor graders actually on those main lines. And so it really has made a difference. Sidewalk maintenance, this is something I think we need to pay attention to. Within Rapid City, you have basically 41% say it's good and excellent, 36% say it's fair, but 22% say it's poor. One of the things that Robert and I have talked about is the need to actually go out and actually survey all the sidewalks in Rapid City every single year. Send them out and actually do a survey and find those trouble spots and require them to be repaired. There again, traffic signal timing, there again, pretty good across the board, 15% say it's poor, but there again, 51% say it's good to excellent, 33% say it's fair. Bus or transit service, there again, good numbers, 15% say it's poor, but there again, 60% say it's good. Amount of public parking, there again, 29% say it's good to excellent, 40, 41% say it's fair, but 30% say it's poor. There again, City of Rapid City, we're moving forward, and I'm, I'm very hopeful that we're going to see President ChiaPlazas move forward, which will certainly add hundreds of new parking stalls in downtown Rapid City. This slide is very basic. What it says is, how do we get around? And if you notice the 81% up there, that's motorized vehicle by yourself. In other words, one person in a car. 81% of the people drive around Rapid City, and they're the sole occupant of the car. And if you notice 10%, they're with kids or other adults. Then there's walking, bicycling, work at home, and other. This is another component of the survey, community design, in other words, housing. Available, availability of affordable quality housing. We have 33% say it's good to excellent, 44% say it's fair, and 23% say it's poor. There again, we still need to try and come up with some good affordable housing options for the citizens of Rapid City. It, it is a struggle. Land prices are high. Variety of housing options, actually scores a little bit better. What we have is, what is that, 51% say it's good to excellent, 36% say it's fair, and only 13% say it's poor. Community design, they're getting land use and zoning. Overall quality of new development in Rapid City, they're asking, what do you think of the development? Well, you have, what you have is 58% say it's good to excellent, 31% say it's fair, and only 11% say we're doing a poor job as far as helping guiding new development in Rapid City. Overall appearance of Rapid City. Now there's a question we really should be asking ourselves. 57% say the overall appearance of Rapid City is either good or excellent. 35% say it's fair, and only 8% say it's poor. There again, land use and zoning. How do, how do they perceive Rapid City as far as providing those services? Land use, planning and zoning, 40% say it's good to excellent, 43% say it's fair, 17%, or 43% say it's fair, and 17% say it's poor. It's one of the things we're, if you remember, we're working on that with the second floor review committee with the, with the Lee Report. Code enforcement, there again, weeds, we really don't have abandoned buildings, but code enforcement sort of means a lot of different things. And this is one of those things that, there again, with the support of the city council, we've been becoming, we've become more proactive in the last six months. And I'm glad we did because of the fact that we had 38% say that it's good to excellent, 35% say it's fair, but 27% say we need to do a better job as far as code enforcement. That isn't just banners, that's also making sure that the neighborhoods are clear. That, that means that if we have a resident that has an abandoned vehicle without an engine sitting in the front yard, we're going to make sure it gets out because that deteriorates for the, really the quality of life for everyone in the neighborhood. Animal control, actually they think we do a pretty good job there. There again, that's through the, actually through the Maine Society, so good for them. There again, economic stability. Employment opportunities, this is the one that we, we need to continue to work on. I mean, this is a struggle for all communities. Only 25% say we do a good to excellent job, 43% say we do a fair job, but 32% say that they don't have good employment opportunities, it's basically based, they call it poor. And there again, that's a struggle all communities are facing, but with the support of the chamber and economic development, we're making progress on that. Shopping opportunities, everyone likes to shop in Rapid City. 60% say it's good to excellent, 31% say it's fair, and 9% say it's poor. Place to work, uh, Rapid City is a place to work, 44% say good to excellent, 38% say fair, and only 19% say it is poor. Overall quality of business and service establishments in Rapid City. 60% say it's good to excellent, 33% say it's fair, and only 7% say it's poor. Let's see, public safety, how do you feel about your community? There again, the first category, how safe do you feel in your neighborhood during the day? Look at that number, holy cow. Um, what is it, 95% feel safe in their own neighborhood during the day? I mean, it's almost a point you can't hardly squeeze the others in. Uh, in your neighborhood after dark, changes a little bit but not too much. Now this is one that actually has five categories. The green means that they neither feel safe or unsafe. Downtown Rapid City area, there again, if you look at during the day, boy, we're talking about 80, 89% feel safe in downtown Rapid City. Couple of years ago, that wasn't the case. With the street crimes task force that we have downtown has made a huge difference in our downtown. And, uh, there again, just literally everybody feels safe. Now, here's one thing we need to work on. In Rapid City, how do you, do you feel safe downtown after dark? Now, 51% say yes, but 18% say, eh, we don't know. 24% say they feel somewhat unsafe, and 7% feel very unsafe. We need to work on that. Lighting, it's going to be a big deal in downtown Rapid City. Violent crime, there again, how do you feel about that? There again, what you have is 60, 68% feel that they're either very safe or somewhat safe from violent crime, 15% say, uh, neither way, 15% say somewhat unsafe, and only 3% very unsafe. Property crimes, there again, similar numbers, 14% very safe, 43% somewhat safe, 50% unsure, 22% somewhat unsafe, and only 6% very unsafe. Environmental hazards, quite honestly, we score off, off the charts there. I mean, you're talking about 70, almost 80% feel that it's very safe. Police safety, in other words, this is sort of rating our, our emergency responders, both fire and the police department. Police services, they actually rated, if you notice there, it is what, 73% as either good or excellent, 21% say it's fair, and only 5% say that our police services is poor. Fire, look at that, holy cow. You're talking 89% say it is good to excellent, 11% say it's fair, and no one said it was poor. Of course, you know why, don't you? Well, yeah, tickets, no. Because when the firemen come, or the ambulance shows up, you need them. Sometimes when the police show up, you don't necessarily need them. There again, ambulance service, basically the same thing, look at that, almost the same numbers as far as the fire service. No one, no one responded that we had any concern as far as our fire service and our ambulance service. Crime prevention, there again, 60% say it's excellent to good, 27% say it's fair, and 13% say it's poor. Fire prevention, there again, we do a great job as fires, as far as fire prevention. There again, look at the red. The bigger the red, the more the concern should be. Traffic enforcement, it goes up a little bit. One of the things we need to probably take a look at is how we're doing traffic enforcement. Some of the folks are saying that we need to do a better job as, as far as enforcing the rules. Now municipal courts, there again, this, this is a generic question that they ask. It's something that the city certainly can't control, but really it's a question as far as quality of life in the community. They believe that 64% is good to excellent as far as municipal courts, 31% say it's fair, and only 5% say it's poor. Emergency preparedness, how prepared are we? What is their perception? Well, there again, what you have there is, you have 72% feel that we're doing an excellent to good job, 23% say fair, and only 5% say it's poor. Environmental, environmental stability, rating of the community's natural environment. Cleanliness of Rapid City, how do people perceive us? Basically 60% say that it's either good or excellent, 34% say it's fair, and only 8% say it's poor. Overall, quality of overall natural environment in Rapid City, there again, 76% say it's good to excellent, 19% say it's fair, 5% say it's poor. Preservation of open space, there again, 68% say good to excellent, 22 fair, and 11 poor. Air quality, quite honestly, I thought this was going to be a little bit higher as far as a negative. What you have is, you have 70% say it's good to excellent, 23% fair, and only 7% say it's poor. Utilities, now there again, a lot of these we don't control, but it's still fair to ask the question. Power, gas and electricity, they're saying that we actually have, 73% would rate it as either good or excellent, 21% is fair, and only 5% as far as poor. Sewer services, that is the City of Rapid City. Look at that number. 77% say it's good to excellent, 20% say fair, and only 3% say it's poor. Drinking water, there again, very high numbers. Storm sewer, very high numbers. Yard waste pickup, very high numbers. Recycling, very high numbers. Garbage collection, very high numbers. So there again, the quality of those enterprise funds, which are water and sewer and garbage, those enterprise funds are perceived as providing a very good level of service. Parks, I almost hate to talk about this one because they're going to get, they're going to get off of big heads. This is basically a graph showing in the last 12 months, how many actually used the city's recreational centers. 69% of the folks in Rapid City say, in the last 12 months, they've used a rec center. Participated in a rec program, 60% in the last 12 months. Visited a neighborhood or city park, 92% have visited a city park in the last 12 months. That's incredible. How do they feel that our parks are? Well, city parks, how do you feel about them? Well, look at that. 88% say either excellent or good, 12% say fair, and no one said they were poor. Recreational programs or classes, there again, you're talking about 76% said excellent to good, 20% said fair, and only 4% say poor. Recreational facilities, the actual structures themselves, the indoor aquatic center, the indoor ice rink, the outdoor skating or skateboard park, so forth. There again, look at that. 60, what, 76% say it's good to excellent, 21% say it's fair, and 3% say it's poor. There again, part of the rec and wellness component talks about culture and, and arts and education. And so they ask the question, opportunities to attend cultural activities. Well, what we have here is 58% say it's good to excellent, 32% say it's fair, and 10% say it's poor. Educational opportunities, there again, 55, 62% say it's good to excellent, 29% say fair, and poor was 9%. We continue on, use of library. 64% say that they've used library services once within the last 12 months. That's good. That's, that's well above the national average. Participated in religious or spiritual activities within Rapid City, there again, that's a community question. 66%, two-thirds basically said that they have participated at least once in religious or spiritual activities in Rapid City. Public schools, there again, we don't control public schools, but it's a fair question to ask because it really is a quality of life issue within Rapid City. What do you think of our schools? Well, what you have is, you have 65% that rate the public schools as either excellent or good, 28% is fair, and only 8% as far as poor. I should have probably given the schools a heads up because I didn't give them those numbers, so they'll probably be calling in the morning. Library services, there again, straight out of the chute, 83% say it is excellent or good, 15% say it is fair, and only 2% say it's poor. That's, that says an awful lot for our library. There again, under recreation and wellness, health and wellness of the community, we're going to talk about healthcare. Now there again, we don't control healthcare, but it's a fair question to ask, what's the perception in our community? Because it really does impact the quality of life. Availability of affordable quality healthcare, what you have is, you have 44% say it's, it's excellent to good, a huge block, 34% say it's fair, and 22% say it's poor. I'm only speculating, but my guess is, is, there again, the access to good, affordable quality healthcare is probably the issue. Availability of affordable quality of food, you have 54% say it's excellent to good, 34% say it's fair, 12% say it's poor. Availability of preventative health services, Bonnie's going to pay attention to this one. 53% say it's good to excellent, 33% say it's fair, 13% say it's poor. Community, there again, can be doing a better job. Community inclusiveness, rating the community quality and inclusiveness. In other words, how do people feel included in the society? Sense of community, you have 61% that said that, yes, it, they feel included, either excellent or good. 31% say fair, and only 7% say poor. Now here's the next question. Openness and acceptance of community towards people of diverse backgrounds. In other words, what we're probably talking about really here is probably the perception of racism. And what you have is, you have 46% say it's good to excellent, 35% say it's fair, and we can improve it. It's a 19% still say that we don't include or we don't accept people with diverse backgrounds. There again, we continue to work, Deb, you've worked awful hard on, on that task force, you know, you know, and we'll continue to work towards, there again, making sure that everyone feels welcome here in Rapid City. So thank you, Deb, I know that you've worked hard on that. Availability of affordable quality childcare, there again, we don't control that, but it's an issue in a community. 36% say it's good to excellent, 42% say it's fair, and 22% say it's poor. Rapid City is a place to raise your kids. This is an important, basic question. What you have here is what, 76% say it's excellent to good, 20% say it's fair, and poor is 4%. Rapid City is a place to retire, there again, 66% say it's good to excellent, 25% say it's fair, and poor is 5%. Quality of services to our seniors, 70% say it's either excellent to good. That is a great number, you guys, it really is. Folks, that's, that's incredible. 23% say it's fair, and only 4% say that we do a poor job as far as providing services to our seniors. Services to the youth, very close to the, the same results as our seniors, and low income, fairly close. Little bit concerned about the 17%, we need to work on that a little bit. Rating of civic engagement opportunities, in other words, the ability for citizens to become involved in their community. There again, what you have is, you have 60% feel that their opportunities are good to excellent, 33% say fair, and 7% say poor. Opportunities to volunteer, that's a big one. If you notice, 78% feel that they have excellent to good opportunities to volunteer, 20% say fair, and only 3% say poor. Civic engagement, there again, this is one of those, and matter of fact, a couple of you've already seen. 28% of the public say that in the last 12 months, they've actually attended either a city council meeting or one of our other meetings. 57% say that they've actually watched the meetings, either on the internet or cable TV. 61% say that they have volunteered some time or to a group or an activity in Rapid City. 46% participated in a club or civic group, one of the service groups, and 96% say they have provided help to a friend or to a neighbor. We all, we all know in western South Dakota, we help our neighbors and friends. There again, information and awareness, as far as the information that the city is trying to get out. 55% said that they have read the city's newsletter. I will tell you, I think that's probably a little bit high. I think a lot of people confuse that with reading the newspaper. I, we have a wonderful newsletter, but I just can't believe that 55% of the public actually read it. Visited the city's website, 50% say in the last 12 months that they've visited the Rapid City's website. We should be very proud of the website we've had. A couple of years ago, we spent a lot of time and effort basically revising that website to make it easy for everyone to navigate, and also the sheer amount of information that is on their website is absolutely incredible. We get comments all the time. There again, rating of, of local government media services and information, there again, cable TV, 17 and 48% say it's good to excellent, 24% say fair, and 10% say poor. Public information services, there again, between the, the excellent to good, you're talking about 67%, 29% say fair, and 4% say poor. There again, social engagement, the opportunities to participate in social events and activities, there again, it's not a bad number, 62% say it's good to excellent, 32% say it's fair, and 6% say it's poor. Opportunities to participate in religious and spiritual events, very similar question asked earlier, there again, 70% say that's good to excellent, 17% say it's fair, and poor is 3%. Here's a good question. Public trust, how do people perceive the services provided by the City of Rapid City? 66%, almost two-thirds believe that the services provided by the City of Rapid City are good or excellent, 27% say fair, and 8% say poor. That's a good number. It really is. We, everyone, all of our city employees, and quite honestly, all of the select officials, we should be feeling very good about this, especially when you see how they feel about the federal government. Because the next one is federal government. If you notice, word 11, excellent, 54% say it's good. Well, the federal government's 5 and 39, 35% and a negative 22. Services provided by state government is, they're getting positive, excellent is 6%, good is 47%, 36% is fair, and 10% is poor. Services provided by Pennington County, 5%, there again, is excellent, 50% is good, 33% is fair, and 12% is poor. I want to do- I want to just stop here real quick. I want you to look at that top number, services provided by the city of Rapid City. There again, sixty-five percent say that it is either excellent or good, twenty-seven percent say it's fair, and only eight percent say it's poor. It's important you remember that number because, believe it or not, that's actually a benchmark that we're actually below the national average. I, I, I found that incredible, but there again, don't look at the percentages, we're looking at comparisons to other communities. That's one that we actually scored a little bit below the average. That surprised me. Value of services for the taxes paid to Rapid City, forty-eight, eight percent say it was excellent, forty percent say it was good, thirty-seven percent say it is fair, and sixteen percent say it was poor. Now on this one, if you notice, the poor was a little bit higher, but yet this is similar to other communities as far as their rating, the value they're getting for the taxes they're paying. Overall direction the city of Rapid City is taking, there again, seven percent excellent, forty-five percent was good. So there again, fifty-two percent, thirty-four percent says fair, and thirteen percent say it's poor. The job the city government has done welcoming city, welcoming citizens' involvement, there again, forty-nine percent said good to excellent, thirty-five percent said fair, and sixteen percent say poor. Overall image or reputation of Rapid City, that is a very important question. There again, sixteen percent said excellent, forty-nine percent said good. There again, that's sixty-five percent, two-thirds. Twenty-nine percent said fair, and only seven percent said it was poor. This is the one that I'm probably one of the, this is probably one of the one I'm most proud of, and that is our city employees. They're asking the questions, how, how is the job that our city employees perceive by the, by the, by the public? As far as knowledge, look at that. Seventy-nine percent say that our employees are knowledgeable, fifteen percent say fair, and only six percent said poor. responsiveness, there again, sixty-nine percent said either excellent or good, twenty-one percent say fair, and only ten percent said poor. Courteous, how are they, you know, are they courteous? Seventy-four percent say excellent to good, fourteen percent is fair, poor was twelve. Overall impression of our city employees, there again, seventy-three percent said excellent to good, fifteen percent said fair, and only twelve percent said poor. That means that our city employees are doing a bang-up job. They really are. Policy questions. If you remember, we had three opportunities to ask questions that were not what I will call standardized questions. In other words, they were specifically written for the city of Rapid City. The city has recently increased its efforts to revitalize the downtown area for economic development tourism. To what extent do you support or oppose these efforts? Well, thirty-nine percent strongly support, thirty-eight percent somewhat support, fourteen percent somewhat oppose, and nine percent strongly oppose. Tell you what, if you add it up, what is it, seventy-seven percent say they were right, were heading in the right direction as far as a revitalization of downtown. You don't get much better than that. Other questions. Please rate the job that the city has done at controlling expenses during the current economic downturn. There again, nine percent said excellent, thirty-nine percent said good, thirty-four percent said fair, and only seventeen, and only seventeen percent said poor. There again, in my mind, I think what they've decided is that we're doing a good job. There again, 2012, how are we spending 2012 money, including the civic center, airport improvements at all? How, how would you rate the, the overall rating or basically the performance of city government as far as using your 2012? It's almost identical to how they perceive that we're spending their money. Fifteen percent said excellent, forty percent said good, thirty-one percent said fair, and only fifteen percent said poor. So those were the three policy questions. Results, city services. Now keep in mind, it's broken out into community and city services. Of the city services, there are thirty-eight available comparisons to the national benchmarks. We rated eleven above, nineteen similar, and eight below. Community, there again, that rated actually above the benchmark, this is community-wide. Ease of travel by bicycles, availability of pass and walk, walking trails, shopping opportunities, safety in your neighborhood during the day, safety in your neighborhood after dark, environmental hazards, quality of overall natural environment, opportunities to volunteer, services provided, provided by state government, believe it or not. Even though state government actually ranked below us, they were above the benchmark, right? You'll see in just a minute, even though we ranked higher than state government, we actually fell a little bit below the benchmark. City above benchmarks, emergency preparedness, preservation of natural areas, sewer service, drinking water, recycling, city parks, recreational programs or classes, recreational centers or facilities, services to seniors was above the benchmark, services to low income, which was interesting because remember, services to low income was one that we, that I said that we need to keep an eye on, but we actually were above the, the national benchmark. And cable TV, believe it or not. Okay, community below the benchmark, overall quality of life. We scored very, very high, but yet the community was still below the national benchmark. I, I'm shaking my head at that one because if you remember, we were almost off the charts. But compared to other communities, we were still below that benchmark. Recommending living to Rapid City, we were what, eighty-some percent, but yet we were still below the benchmark. Variety of housing options, that doesn't surprise, overall appearance of Rapid City, we were close to eighty percent, but there again, we were below the benchmark. Employment opportunities, we talked about that, Rapid City's a place to work, safety in, in Rapid City's downtown after dark, violent crime, cleanliness of Rapid City, availability of affordable, quality food, openness and acceptance of the community towards people of diverse backgrounds, availability of affordable childcare, other things, street repair, we were below the national average. Now there again, this is the city, this isn't the community, this is the city. Street repair, street cleaning, snow removal, and sidewalk maintenance, we were actually below the, the benchmark. There again, with Robert Ellis' direction, quite honestly, we, we made huge strides forward, and quite honestly, next year when we take this, I expect those to actually get a lot better. On a public parking was below the benchmark, code enforcement. There again, we're being, we're becoming proactive in code enforcement. Public schools, they got what, almost eighty percent? But yet, public schools were rated below the national benchmark. Crime prevention was below, traffic enforcement, and services by the city of Rapid City. Even though we scored well, it was still below the national benchmark as far as perception. The results, what they tell us, there's three key areas that they say that if, if we want to help drive the positive perception of city government, where do we focus? And if you notice the keys there, whoops. Okay, Roy, what did I do? Roy, help me out, thank you. Police services, there again, we need to focus a little bit more on police services, economic development, and preservation of natural areas. Those are the areas where they're saying that if we put a little bit more focus, the overall, the overall impression of the community and city government will actually go up. And I'll, I'll close with this quote, "When performance is measured, performance improves. When performance is measured and reported back, the rate of improvement accelerates." That's what it's all about. With that, certainly stand by for questions. There again, just a reminder, this is online. We can certainly discuss this later, be happy to, to do it in a more informal setting, but with that, if there's any questions, be glad to try and answer.
Thank you, Mayor. That was some very good information. I was really amazed at the return, thirty-eight percent returned the survey is quite amazing. Any questions for Mayor Hanks? We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thanks. Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for having this, the foresight to, to do this, and I also would like to challenge my fellow council members to, I think we need to keep the, you know, obviously study these in more details, but to try to focus our decisions and our money toward these recommendations. Because I know the road repairs and those complaints that were just listed there, those, for the most part, were exactly what I heard when I walked doors last, last year. And so anyway, we might want to use this budget period to shift more money toward, you know, toward different areas. And I also want to thank the city employees for all their work.
Ron?
Any other comments or questions for the mayor? Mayor?
Thank you. And Bonnie brings up a very good point, because really, the, the question is what now? We have the results, so what do we do with the results? And we've already had discussions with the department directors, saying that we need to start incorporating these results basically into our strategy in the coming year. And Bonnie was dead-on when she said, we need to start focusing on some of these things, as far as street repair, as far as snow removal and so forth. And, and Robert brought up a very good point that I hadn't thought about until he mentioned it. If you look at all the different responsibility Public Works actually has, they scored very, very high, almost across the board, with the exception of the different functions that they get money from, general funds. All the enterprise funds were off the chart. If you remember that, you know, water, the sewer, the, the landfill, those are all off the chart. And so one of the things that we need to take a look at is seeing if we can find more resources to, to go after those issues that have been identified by the public as, as potential problems. There again, road construction, boy, we're gonna, we're gonna be a cone zone this year, there's no question about that. That's, just remember my statement, it's not construction, it's progress. I don't think it'll catch on. And snow removal, there again, Robert has done a great job as far as tweaking that, and I'm gonna tell you, if, if we were to ask that same question today, I think we'd probably get a different response, because over the last two or three snow events, I think we've dramatically improved our response. So with that, thank you so much. And like I say, Bonnie's spot-on when she says that we need to be incorporating this into our budget discussions, and we certainly will.
Any further questions for the mayor? Deb Hadcock?
Really for the mayor, I appreciate the presentation. I think when you have a presentation, it does give you, like you said, you can look at the performances and what can be better. But I also have to give credit to the, some of the things that were on there about some of the public work areas, because we are and have listened, and Robert Ellis can attest to that, and the, the city council at this point, we keep putting more and more into infrastructure, street repairs in different areas. And if we look at the improvement we've done, and we've done in the last few years on infrastructure, first we needed water and sewer, so we've done lots of reservoirs, lift stations, different things first, and then we, now we're coming into street repairs and other things. So Public Works has been listening, it's just because we had a lot of development, we got behind on some of those areas. So now we're focusing more on street repairs and other issues in Public Works, and he's done an excellent job. You can only do cycles on what you do for performance as well, and those, like I said, you start in different areas and then you move forward. And now it's going into street repairs and other things that will always, when you are in the city council or the mayor, always will be on the agenda is infrastructure. We have soils in South Dakota or Rapid City that continually from water will be up and down, and those streets will get horrible pretty quick. So that's always gonna be on the agenda, and, and you can always put a lot of money, money into that. But like I said, we could always do better, but now we have time to focus. We also, with Malcolm Chapman's help, he had brought forward with Robert Ellis as well, to put more money, and the mayor as well, point one-six, that came forward at his suggestion, and working with Robert as a team, brought that forward. And we keep getting more and more ideas of how we can bring more cash flow into those street repairs and other areas of potholes and stuff for the residents. And so it's getting better and better, and I think in the future, you'll see more and more improvements in that area. And I think it's great now, but like we said, we can do better.
Mayor Hanks?
Thank you, and Deb, thank you. You're, you're dead-on. One of the other things that Robert and I have talked about, and I know that Alderman Davis has also been very interested in this, is, is basically doing a quick response on potholes. We try very hard. If we, if we get a report of a pothole, we try to get out there that very same day, if not within the next couple hours. And one of the things I think we need to do is we need to publicize that. It's a, it's, quite honestly, it's a well-kept secret. If you call, we will respond. And so we're gonna go out and we're gonna find ways to actually include that on a website. We'll also maybe even get a hotline out there and advertise that, so.
One more thing, sorry.
Deb Hadcock?
Just one more thing. One thing I'm noticing too is on private resident, or private businesses and residential areas, where, you know, the residents and the businesses are supposed to take care of theirs, we need to do something different that way as well. Because you're going into areas where businesses have huge potholes and different things as well. So it's not just city issues. Like I said, it's a soil issue of South Dakota and Rapid City that if you go into the private areas, they're just as bad. And I can tell you, as a parking lot owner, that cracks about every year, and you have to do major repairs every year on that parking lot. It isn't something that you can wait ten years because you wouldn't have a parking lot in two. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Further comments, Ron Wifenbach?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be short and to the point. I just wanted to let the mayor and Robert Ellis know that the people that responded to those street repairs live on my street, East Ohio Street.
Sure, good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the mayor? Okay, there's none. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number fifty-six B, which has to do with the Sign Code Task Force, I believe. Oliver McQuaker, you brought that one forward.
Thank you. I would just like to have a brief update on the status of the Sign Code Committee. I mean, we heard testimony earlier tonight regarding the concerns over the process, but I was willing and am willing to offer a, a motion for delivery of a recommendation from the committee. But I, I first wanted to, to get an update on that and see if it made sense for this council to ask the committee to bring forward a recommendation one way or another. So Lisa, would you be willing to?
I would. Do you mind if I call you?
I think Oliver Costello is the chair of that committee, maybe we'll go to him first.
Thank you very much. I am the chair of that committee. And as far as bringing forward recommendations, we have voted on a few, but I have nothing right offhand that is, that there's been any discussion from the committee as a whole to bring anything forward. So I think that any comments that would be made now, it'd simply be the observations of people speaking as individuals, not representing the committee as a whole. To give an update, it's no secret that this has been a contentious set of meetings. We have tried many different methods to bring forward some recommendations, to come to some conclusions. I initially approached these meetings with the mentality of having very open discussion, with very, I'll say vague agendas, because I didn't want to narrow the conversation so much. My attitude towards these meetings has changed. I brought in the help of Barb Garcia, who has a lot of experience working with different groups on contentious issues, and getting the conversation narrowed down to a point to, to actually, to, to make some meaningful recommendations. First implemented that at last Wednesday's meeting, and that meeting, from my perception, went quite well. We plan on continuing that at the next meeting. I also, well, I guess as far as an update goes, I'll, I'll end there. If there are any more specific questions, I would, it'd be my pleasure to answer them.
Thank you. I guess I, I just wanted to state that, you know, I've been hearing some concerns about the discussions, and I, you know, we've had similar issues in the past in other types of situations with other committees, and we've been able to, you know, by the city council saying, you know, please bring forward your recommendation, it's helped the process. But I'm, I want to defer to the rest of the council before I offer that motion tonight, because I don't want to make the situation worse. At the same time, I, I think that might be, it might be helpful. So I wanted to throw that out there as an idea, I'm not throwing it out there as a motion yet, but perhaps other council members want to jump in on this discussion. Thank you.
Further comments, we'll go to Deb Hadcock.
Can, is that okay if I ask Mr. Costello a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Costello, don't we have a deadline already of when those recommendations are coming forward, sir?
Yes, Ms. Hadcock, the deadline is April eighteenth.
I appreciate that. I would say then let the committee do their work. That, that would be my bottom line, is, you know, they've been doing this for a while. Bottom line is, they're bringing recommendations, and why would we hurry or bring that forward quicker? Let them do their work and finish their job and bring those forward on April eighteenth.
Further discussion, Ron Wifenbach?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, I have confidence that Mr. Costello can do what it takes to, with the job that he's tasked with. I mean, tonight there was obvious talk about billboards. I think that the task force is looking at more than billboards, more than just off-site billboards. I think there's, I know that I've gotten probably thirty, I would actually- I think there's, I know that I've gotten probably 30, I would actually say 30, I've at least 20 to 25 phone calls in reference to the banner parade where they went through town and it made people adhere to the banner things, which is, you know, overall probably a good thing as long as we're consistent with it and keep moving forward. And I think also people need to understand, because I attended one of the task force meetings myself, and sometimes when people are on task force, if they don't hear what they want to hear, or, you know, debate is contentious at times, but in the end, if you get the results and you achieve something, maybe not everybody's gonna agree. But if you have a goal and you can get to that goal, there's been mention made about the sign, people have an interest, well, of course they have an interest, their livelihoods are at stake. I think anybody, everybody would be the same if their livelihoods were at stake. I think that you guys have been tasked with a heavy duty task, which I disagreed with in the first place. I think that the heavy work should have been done on this council. I'm elected by the constituents in my ward, and I represent them, and I'm gonna make the final decision no matter what happens. And I appreciate recommendations coming forward, if we're looking at all the factual information and bringing the facts forward for us to make a decision. So, I, I'm not sure that, I mean, if Alderman Costello is not prepared to make any kind of update tonight, I can respect that. I don't know that he knew that was coming, I didn't know it was coming, and I'm sure that the committee didn't know it was coming, so I think that we'll give them to April 18th, whatever that date may be, and if there is contention, I think you, like you do, you bring in people to help mediate it and help figure it out, so I appreciate all the hard work that's going in from everybody. But understand, debate can be contentious, and debate may not be the end result that you particularly want, whether you're pro-sign or anti-sign, or whether it's on-premise, off-premise, or whatever the case may be. Debate can be contentious as long as it's healthy and not personal. So, I appreciate the efforts of everybody involved. Thank you.
Further comments from the council? There is no motion on the floor. Any further comments? Being none, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number 57, mayor.
Thank you. Item number 57 under staff items, this is a 2012 update. Mr. Ellis, I think there was just one small change, is that correct?
Yes, very quick, $17,312.40 for geotechnical testing on the Main Street Square project. That's it.
That is reflected in the link on the agenda, correct? Okay, very good. Any discussion, or if we could have a motion to acknowledge your report? We have a motion and second to acknowledge your report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are on to the public hearing items, these are items 60, I'm sorry, 58 through 68 inclusive. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment periods on 58 through 68 inclusive, please.
No motion.
We have a motion and second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. I do not have any additional speaker request forms, and now, this is the time of the, this is the part of the meeting where we do leave the public comment period open, so we will go on to the continued public hearing consent items, items 58 and 59. Marcia, do we need to poll either one of those? Okay, how about from the city council? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items 58 and 59, for the recommendations on the printed agenda.
No motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We have a second. We have a motion and second to close public hearing, a public comment period on items 58 through 68. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent public hearing items, these are items 60 through 66 inclusive. Ask if any of these need to be pulled from the consent calendar, dealing with items 60 through 66. Pauline, any of these need to be pulled? Okay, how about from the council, or Jason? Okay? Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items 60 through 66 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Did you need one pulled?
No, I need to reconsider.
Oh, okay, we'll do that in just a second. Okay, motion on the floor is for approval of the consent calendar, items 60 through 66 inclusive. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Let me go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you. If you would please, the council, I'd like to reconsider item 59, I lost track of my items on the agenda, it's a, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 59, is, okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, item number 59. Discussion on that motion, Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much. I need to abstain from this item as my employer's involved in it, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, with Alderman Costello abstaining. Got that, Charlene? Thank you so much. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar, we're on to the non-consent public hearing items, items 67 and 68. Let's do item number 67 first, please. Let's see, is that Alderman Quaker? Alderman Quaker, could you please read in item number 67?
Item 67 is to authorize mayor and finance officers a signed waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of additional pavement along Lindbergh and Patton, located east of Wood between Lindbergh Avenue and Patton Street. Recommendation is for approval, that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, item number 67. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 68, please.
Item 68 is a request by DC Scotland surveyors for northern development for a variance of the subdivision regulations sway the requirement to increase the existing pavement width from 24 to 27 feet along Lindbergh and Patton as they abut the property pursuant to 16.16, the municipal code located east of Wood between Lindbergh and Patton. Move to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, any discussion on the motion? Let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, I'd like to ask Marcia a question, please.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Hey, I believe we discussed this before, but I'm trying to, this is like the street's already this size, is that's right? Is this just kind of a legal?
Marcia?
That's correct, this is an existing right-of-way width, again, if there was additional right-of-way dedicated, that would result in other issues with a setback, and you saw this a month or two ago, and this was the direction that the council chose to take.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, item number 68, approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 69, the bill list, Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, total bill list before you is $6,405, excuse me, $4,5,814.91. There are no additions.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bill list as published for a grand total of $6,405,814.91. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session?
Yes, for the purposes permitted by STCL 1-25-2.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
No motion.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for purposes permitted by STCL 1-25-2. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.